Better hit it twice.
I'm gonna figure out which one to hit.
Okay. We'll open the Monday, June 25th, 2018 Board of Select, Groveland Board of Selectment Meeting at, looks like at just about 6:30, I believe. And we'll open with the Stand By, Blood of Allegiance.
Blood of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We'll start with a public comment. I see there's no public comments, so we'll move right to the approval of the warrants. Motion to approve payroll warrant 18-51 in the amount of $150,688.46.
Second?
Any discussion? See, no discussion. All those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion to approve bill warrant 18-51 in the amount of $473,029.72, which breaks down as follows. Town bills are $102,188.95. Light, $353,554.59. Water sewer, $13,938.58. And payroll withholding, $3,347.60.
Second?
You have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Terrific. So, moving right along to appointments. We have the appointment of Mr. Ronald Mertens of 36 King Street to fill the vacancy on the Council on Aging through June 30th, 2019. Did I pronounce that correctly? Is Mr. Mertens here?
No, he's not here.
He's not here. I need to pronounce it correct. Oh, good. I hate to get those calls on the other night.
So, if I may, so Ron was a longtime member of the Council on Aging. According to their bylaws, they have to take time off in between. They can serve two terms and have to take time off. He has been off the board, and now that there's a current vacancy with Anita Wright resigning, he'd like to come back on.
Yeah, he's done a good job while he's on there, so I'll make a motion to appoint Ron Mertens to the Council on Aging through June 30th, 2019.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See, there's no discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. We have the appointment of Mr. John Stokes of 92 Seven Star Road to fill a vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals through June 30th, 2021. Is Mr. Stokes here? Oh, congratulations. So thankful that you have that interest. I don't know if you might want to step to the podium. I don't know if anybody wants to have any questions or... Yeah, this way, they don't have to keep moving the TV camera around. These guys, their arthritic fingers don't work too well. First of all, thank you for stepping up. I know it's been a tremendous need for a while. A few people have stepped up in the interim, but they haven't been able to do it full time. So, first of all, I want to thank you for your interest and volunteering. Read your letter. It's... Res? That's not the one. That's the wrong one. Anybody? Mr. Wood?
Yep. So, I served on the ZBA for a couple of years, too. Do you have any experience with that?
I was on the ZBA for a number of years, probably 20 to 25 years ago.
Okay.
With Peter Minnick.
All right, so you've done it before, so you know that, and you know that the bylaws or some of the ZBA structures changed a little bit since then, most recently over the last year or so.
Yes.
Yeah. Casey's really good to work with. She'll be a good guidance for you, but no, that's it. Thank you for stepping forward.
No, I was on the board, and it seems like you were there, and you know what the ropes are, so if we can just keep that, the rewrite going and keep that zoning board changes going, that'd be great.
Yep.
And thank you for stepping up.
You're welcome.
Slickman, Watson.
Well, no, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Stokes to the Groveland ZBA effective, it's effective immediately? I don't know. Effective immediately until 2022?
Uh, June 30th, 2021.
June 30th, 2021.
Second?
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Terrific. Okay, moving right along, we have our annual appointments. Does the board wish to approach these in any particular fashion?
How did we do it last year?
We tried to do it by groups for the sake of expediency unless there was a specific argument against any person in the group.
So, I will just say, we, obviously, we did not get a response from some people, so that's something to keep in mind. I'm not sure how you want to handle those, if you plan to just reappoint them or not reappoint them until they get back in touch with us. I'm not really sure how you want to handle that.
Can we reappoint them?
Whether they want to be down there or not.
I should have been a yes on this.
Hey, where are your selectmen, Watson?
TV Advisory Board.
Oh. Shall we pencil you in for a yes, then?
Yes.
So, seeing as there's no particular preference, I would suggest then we take them by group. Is that amenable to everyone?
Whatever's the easiest.
All right, works for me. ADA Coordinator, we have Sam Jocelyn.
Make a motion to reappoint Sam Jocelyn, ADA Coordinator, or reappoint.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Terrific. All those in favor?
Yes.
Those opposed? Great. Affordable housing, right now, we have four vacant spots. If you're listening out there, we could use some help. Right now, we have Melissa Covey, is that correct? As the only Affordable Housing Committee member. And there's no response. So, I think we just appoint her again.
Second to the board. But then again, what happens if she doesn't want it? Then we've appointed...
Well, then we could just...
You want to put a hold on it?
Or I would say, I mean, maybe the no responses you hold off, and if they come forward and then before the next meeting, I mean, there's no requirement. They can't have an Affordable Housing meeting because there's no one else on the board, so...
I just hate to give them a chance to say no. You know how it is around here, sometimes if you give them a chance to say no, they will. So, if we appoint them, they might, you know, just stay around.
She can't meet by herself, right?
We had some no responses, and some of it was because the person's email address had changed and perhaps a letter to their last known address, in case their email addresses changed and they, and we don't have the correct...
I think that's a great idea, Slickman Watson. Why don't we send a letter of congratulations on her reappointment to the Affordable Housing Committee and see if we get a response then?
So, we should reappoint her in order to send a congratulatory letter, right?
I'm hoping, yeah, this way she'll say yes. And maybe you bring some of her friends to fill some of these vacancies that we have, and then they can have an actual committee meeting. I mean, that's my plan. I don't know if it'll work, but...
She can't meet by herself anyways, right?
She can't be by herself, but... But right now, one committee member's better than none.
Whatever works for me.
Well, can I make a motion to appoint Ms. Covey to the Affordable Housing Committee for an annual appointment?
You can, and I'll second it. How's that?
Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? All right, she was unanimously reappointed. Assistant Plumber Gas Inspector, Richard Danforth.
I make a motion that we approve his appointment.
Do we have, does this person have to be in town?
No, they're appointed.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to appoint Richard, Mr. Danforth, to the Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
I'll second that and make the motion.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Opposed? Terrific. Board of Registers, Susan D'Angelo.
I make a motion that we approve Susan D'Angelo for an appointment to the Board of Registers.
And it's a three-year appointment.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Terrific. Building Inspector, Sam Jocelyn, annual appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Sam Jocelyn for the Building Inspector.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
May I just kindly recommend, so he is the Building Commissioner, the Zoning Enforcement Officer, the ADA Coordinator, and the Flood Plane Administrator. I would recommend you just appoint him to all of four of those at once.
At once? Very good suggestion.
So, I will amend my motion to include the following. What was it again? The ADA Coordinator, the Building Inspector...
The Zoning Enforcement Officer...
Zoning Enforcement Officer.
And the Flood Planes Administrator.
And the Flood Plane Officer.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Terrific. Barrell Agent, Ann Brody.
Make a motion to appoint Ann Brody to Barrell Agent.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Great. Cable Advisory Board, we have two vacancies, but we're here to appoint Mr. Rob Carbone, Mr. Tracy Guilford, and Mr. Ed Watson.
I make a motion that we approve Rob Carbone, Tracy Guilford, and Ed Watson to annual appointment of the Cable TV Advisory Board.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Those opposed? Good. Capital Improvement Committee, it's, is she, oh, do we have to...
You probably don't. They do every year, but it's included as part of my, I think it's in our chart, our, our bylaws that I serve as ex officio, so it's up to you if you can make the appointment or not.
Let's make it official, just in case anybody out there's listening and paying attention.
I'll make an appointment, appoint Denise to Capital Improvement Committee, ex officio. Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing as there's none, all those in favor? Opposed? Community Preservation, we have Lisa Carpenter. It'd be you. Three-year appointment. Look at that.
I'll make a motion.
Well, we have Lisa, oh, sorry, it's a different one. Never mind, sorry.
Yes, so, because that specifically serves as a member of this board, I didn't know if you were interested, Lisa, in continuing.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Lisa Carpenter, Community Preservation Committee, as a Board of Selectment candidate.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we have a Conservation Commission, which currently comprised of Mr. Mike Dempsey, Mr. Thomas Schaefer, and Mr. Terry Grimm. All are three-year appointments.
I make a motion that we appoint Mike Dempsey, Thomas Schaefer, and Terry Grimm to those three-year appointments to the Conservation Commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do you want for another three years there, Mr. Dempsey? You can handle it. Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Moving right along, Council on Aging, we have two appointments, Mr. Frank Sadowski, hopefully I pronounced that right, and Mr., Miss Laurel...
Pachowski.
Oh, thank you. Pachowski, for three-year terms.
I make a motion that we appoint Frank Sadowski and Laura Polsky to three-year terms on the Council on Aging.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Earth Removal Enforcement Officer, Site Inspector, we have Mr. Robert Arkalian. It's an annual appointment.
I make a motion that we appoint Robert Arkalian to the Earth Removal Enforcement Officer/Site Inspector for a annual appointment.
Seconded.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? This appointment is to June 30th, 2019, is it not?
Correct.
Is it, is it my understanding that Mr. Arkalian may be retiring prior to then?
Yes. But then this position would be vacant to be appointed or to be rolled into the appointed Highway Superintendent position.
Is he so amenable to continue in this capacity, being so close to retirement? Is he, or is he looking to maybe kind of take things off his plate as he gets closer?
No, I think because he's been doing it, he said to just, he would continue to do it until he left.
Okay.
Unless you have someone else you'd prefer to do it, but he said he would continue in that role.
I don't have anyone in mind at the, at the moment, no. Just want to make sure that it's, you know, a role that continues to function. So, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Good. We have Election, Election Constable, Mr. Dave Tuttle and Mr. Ed Reed.
I make a motion that we approve Dave Tuttle and Ed Reed to the annual appointment of Election Constable.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Great. All those in favor? Election Inspector, Zane Gostinian? Wow, he did that good, but I just don't know it's Mr. or Ms.?
Mister.
Mister.
He goes by Gus.
Gus.
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Zaven Gostinian to Electrical Inspector.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have the Elm Square Committee, currently composed of Mr. Scott Baccuzzo, Jim... I shouldn't know these...
Cicatello.
Cicatello, I'm usually good with Italian names. Mr. Mike Dembski, Ms. Betty Gorski, Mr. Gregory Stark Jr., and Ms. Claire Walsh, and we still have, do have a vacancy.
I would make a motion that we appoint all of the individuals, Scott Baccuzzo, Jim Cicatello, Mike Dempsey, Betty Gorski, Greg Stark, and Claire Walsh, to the annual appointment of the Elm Square Committee.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
We still have one vacancy there.
We missed that one.
Did we miss one? Yes, you're right, we did. Cultural Counsel, Ms. Leah Crane, six-year appointment. Thank you, Slickman, done.
I make a motion that we appoint Leah Crane to the Cultural Counsel for a six-year appointment.
Anybody want a second?
Seconded.
Okay. Any discussion? Yes?
Is it possible to do a whole page at a time? Unless there's a...
I'm liking you.
Unless there's a reason for discussion on someone specific, otherwise, I mean, you know, I got to fly out Thursday, and we're not going to, we're not going to make it.
I, I'm liking your recommendation. If, unless there's...
Can I make a recommendation?
You can.
That we don't have to read all the names out, that we can just basically say as noted on the document?
Sure, I was going to say you could just mention the aforementioned, and suddenly no names into...
And that way, you can, you don't necessarily, yeah.
Okay, let's fly.
All right, so you have a motion and a second, though, on Leah Crane.
Yep. All those in favor? Great, move on. So, page two, we have Finance Board. We have Forest Fire Warden, Historical Commission, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, Open Space and Trails Committee. We have the Penn Tucket Regional Finance Committee. We have Personal Advisory Board. We have the Planning Board Alternative Member, Alternate Member, I'm sorry. Plumbing and Gas Inspector, Recreation Auxiliary Member, and Recreation Committee, which we won't get to, we'll save that because it goes over to the next page.
So, I make a motion that we approve all the appointments that are outlined on page two of the annual appointments.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Great. Recreation Committee, moving right along to page three, the Right to Know Officer, Fire Chief, Storm Management Committee, Superintendent Inspector Pest Control, Town Council, Veterans Agent, Zoning Board of Appeals, Zoning Board of Appeal Alternate, Zoning Enforcement Officer, and Finance Board Alternate.
I make a motion that we vote to approve the appointments on the third page of the document as outlined.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
That's much better.
Did I remember, see, I see a member of the Recreation Committee. I don't know if he went. There's two of you here. Oh, okay. So, that'll be... Yep. Okay, so now we have the proposal of...
No, no, sorry, you have to finish the appointments that are in the Police and the rest of the Building Inspector's appointments.
Oh.
They're still in the packet.
If you want appointments? You're not going to do it all by yourself?
So, the only one for the Building Department that you haven't done, that was not included here, is there's a new alternate Electrical Inspector that he would like you to appoint.
So, I make a motion that we appoint William Robitaille as the alternate Electrical Inspector.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Now we'll get to...
Police.
The Police, Chief Gillen. He has appointed the following individuals to indicated positions, to Lieutenant, Officer Dwight P. McDonald, to Sergeant, Eric Ryan, Eric Gorski, and Heather Riley, Full-Time Patrol Officers, Stephen Patron, Joshua Sandoni, Christopher Erthos, Adam Sanborn, Christopher Latalien, Reserve Patrol Officers, Edward Fournier, Paul Pierce, Matthew Lehman, Robert Richards Jr., Michael Ferenczi, Jacob Walsh. For the sake of expediency, does anybody require me to read all the names?
No.
Okay.
So, you make a motion to accept the recommendations for appointments by Chief Gillen?
Seconded.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Great. All those in favor? Okay. Let's see. That should take us to Police Chief Gillen. Isn't that correct? Propose electrical fee permits now.
Yes, so the electrical fee permits, Sam could not be here this evening, he is on vacation. But it, over the last few months, he had been looking at the fees. This board approved an increase in building permit fees. These are the electrical permit fees he is proposing. You can see how he highlighted what he's proposing to change. It's really, I think, on the commercial side. There was supposed to be a catch-all fee, but it's $60, and I guess it doesn't cover really the cost of having the inspection done, so he's proposing this increase.
So, it doesn't really look like there's very many changes from last year, correct?
Correct. And these did not change last year, so this has been, oh, maybe January 1st, so it's been about 18 months since we've looked at these.
So, I make a motion that we accept the proposed electrical wiring permit fees effective July 1st of 2018, submitted by Building Commissioner Sam Jocelyn.
Seconded.
Be you to it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Now, we're on to Police Chief Jeffrey Gillen, correct? I got this right. I can get in the hang of it. How are you today, sir?
Very good. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it. I just have a few different things, but, you know, definitely, there's a lot of things that I need to talk about. Thank you for all the appointments. There's been a lot of discussion about the people that have contradictions and what we're doing in Groveland. In the past, I tried to find programs that would work, and I found one that I'm excited about, that it's being embraced by all the area towns, and it's a, it's after a model program that's taking place in Plymouth County. And it's basically an outreach database program where I've already done some of the training, I got a couple other officers going, it's free training, and it basically includes anybody that's dealt with the police in any area, whether that was Groveland or wherever, that town will enter into a database, the person's name, and if they were given knock-in, and what, what their actual problem was, as far as the front they were on. And then there'll be a follow-up to that, whether they need the treatment and save the treatment. So, global climate, there are people in Groveland that are being affected by this crisis, but they're being treated out of Groveland, and then they come back to Groveland, and we don't know about it. The, the second part is that we're going to go to them and offer some outreach. We would go and give them, whether pamphlets or just talk to them and try to help them get the help that they need. We're working on MOUs with the local hospitals, and so it's a great tool to help us, help people that are really suffering. And another part, this may include counselors that may go with us, but for now, we just want to get involved and just try to offer something to the people that may need our assistance. And if we don't follow up, this database program is going to flag and let us know and give us alerts that we need to go and check on these people. So, I think it's a good program, and I'm anxious to try it, and I just wanted to mention that to the board.
Is there anything to get these kids off of some of these hard drugs is, is worth the effort?
I have some questions.
Absolutely. Go ahead and counsel.
So, um...
Been a long day.
Who will do the follow-up?
I'm going to have one or two officers that are assigned, that are going to do some training.
Okay, and what, what type of training are they going to get?
It's, it's like a counseling, they're going to get up to date on what they can offer them for assistance, what maybe now, how these programs are available for them.
And who provides the training?
Right now, there's a, the Rock Hill House, it's got people that are involved.
Okay.
And as I, I have to note in my work here, it's a recovery coach program that's a work in progress. That's not off the ground, but I don't want to wait too long. I think that we can make a difference just having, you know, one or two officers that are trained and that can just go try.
And there's no obligation, people can close the door and tell us to go away, and, you know, we'd make note of that, but I think you can make a difference coming by a day or two later and, and following up to see if there's something we can do for them.
So, I would respectfully make a recommendation that you reach out to Katie Ryan in Haverhill, who's doing that for the Haverhill Police Department? And see if she has any ideas that she can give you guys. I know you can't do it on that scale, but maybe she can just even share with you the resources that she uses in Haverhill, because they have a program in place right now where she does a home visit the following day for anyone who has OD'd or to whom the police have responded to the previous day.
It sounds like the same idea.
Yeah, so she's working with NFI, but she's really good, so I would, and if you need her contact information, I can provide it to you.
Okay. She may be involved in this at some point, too, so that'd be great.
And then, secondly, access to the database is going to be limited to your officers?
Yeah, just, not all the officers will be restricted.
Okay. And in terms of resource allocation, you don't feel that this will be a huge demand on your department?
No.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't know, this is one of the, the good things about this, is that we don't know how many people outside of Groveland. Every so often, I might get one because it's somebody that has an LTC, I'll, I'll get flagged, or just working close with the communities, I'll hear, but I do believe there are people that are outside getting, you know, knock-in or whatever outside of the community, we don't know about, and it, and again, it's not a way to, it's not an enforcement type of action, it's not to do an investigatory, you know, like any criminal charges, this is simply a follow-up to see if we can offer them assistance, and that's where it will end, so... I know that's something you would talk to me about in the past, so I thought it, I, So I thought it, I, that's one of the reasons I wanted to come here, that I have been looking for something. I think this might be a good fit. In the past, they talked about the Angel Program. And that wasn't well received by the board at that time. And the district attorney didn't endorse it. That was almost encouraging people to come to Groveland.
Yeah.
You know, that we would have to do something. But this way, we can offer something once they need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any way they'll be able to contact the station? Like, like any way, any kind of outreach program you're gonna have that if they do need help or someone from the town can contact you guys anyway? Or that's just all private?
That'd be more private. This one here, we're gonna be more proactive and we're gonna contact them and not give them the option. But they would certainly have the option. Like I said, they can close the door on us and say, "No thanks," or just go away. You know, it's not...
Right, I'm saying letting, letting the town people know the policy, the, you know, this whole program's there for them to... You have the program. If they need it, they can go to you.
Yep.
As well as you going to them, but it...
Yeah.
Is there any way we can let the town people know that you have the program? Or too confusing to...
Yeah, no, we could do what I mean. This isn't designed to go after people unless they, they have an incident. It's kinda the opposite. The other one was that people would come to us. But still, anybody's welcome to come to us. And there's, there's all kinds of exceptions that they won't be, you know, charged with any crimes if they call us and they need help, even if they have drugs on them. So that's in place kind of already.
If there's more proactive stuff that you wanna do, I can give you some information that you could put on your website
Okay.
for the emergency services team. I'm sure you use them anyway. But they're available for anyone as well. And that wouldn't place the burden on the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Do you have any numbers on how many people that have been revived in Groveland with the Narcan? And we'll say, since January first, two thousand seventeen?
I think only a couple. Yeah, it's very low. But again, we're hearing more of going outside of Groveland and having Narcan and problems with overdoses. And then they come back into our community and they're still suffering and we don't know about it. So we have an opportunity maybe to help them.
Narcan's pretty... So there could be people that are being treated with Narcan that we don't know about anyway. Because it's so easily available now.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. Unless there's some action that a police officer knows about it, that information won't get into the database. So it's really up to us to feed the information so we can get it out. But it's good. We're all gonna be connected, all the communities, so.
So these are Groveland residents that have been administered Narcan in another community other than Groveland?
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be just Narcan. It could just be that we know that they had some type of drug incident.
Overdose.
Yeah, an overdose. So I just use Narcan just as a, as a good example that we can all relate to when you talk about somebody that overdosed. But it doesn't have to be that extreme either.
Is it easy for you to get access to that information from the other departments?
Not without knowing. You know, we'd have to, we don't have anything in place where they call us and say, "Hey, you know, one of your residents had Narcan the other night."
So I mean, if you put this in place, though, you'd be reaching out for an MOU that other departments would reach out to you if a Groveland resident came to their attention? Is that sort of what you're proposing?
And then with the outreach, we're gonna have MOUs with the hospitals that we don't just send them to a hospital and they, they don't have any assistance for them. They're gonna make sure there's something there for them. This started in Newburyport. That's where the base is right now. And it's, it's at the ground roots level. So it's, we're just kicking it off. The training's starting on the twenty-eighth for the officers. So it's just starting.
Yes, sir.
How was that, the passing of that information allowed under the HIPAA laws?
We're not healthcare providers. It's more of a police action. And it, and we're certainly allowed to share information amongst the police department to police department. It's not the hospitals that are giving us the information. It's more just what we, we share with our local police departments.
And that, and that information will be restricted to certain officers?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's password protected. It's a pretty tight security on that. And it's not something that everybody can just go and look up. They gotta be trained and they're gonna have to have passwords. And right now, I'll just have two.
Right. I think getting to Selectman Watson's point, it's, I worry about privacy issues.
I don't think it is a violation of HIPAA.
This would be restricted information. Even if we went to the house, we wouldn't, this would never be information that, it would be redacted from the log. It's, it's certainly a sensitive, you've mentioned like even HIPAA. Not that we deal with that as much, but this isn't something you'd see in the newspaper.
Well, if you go into, to any hospital or healthcare facility, generally in the elevators, you'll see something similar to the staff to be not discussing patient confidentiality stuff and also reminding family members not to do that. Same thing. I just, it...
It isn't the same.
Just seems kinda strange that you could, another police department could call and tell you that an individual is revived with Narcan and Groveland, a Groveland resident. It just, it just seems like that would be against the HIPAA laws.
We don't, we don't follow HIPAA. We're not healthcare providers.
First responders? The healthcare providers?
We don't fall under HIPAA as far as I know. And this, this isn't that type of situation where we're putting it out and sharing it with the media. Police departments, the knowledge of one police officer is the knowledge of another. And that's basically what we fall under as far as sharing information. I use it. I've had departments come because somebody has a license to carry a firearm and they've had to, had to Narcan them. And I need to know that stuff. It's a disqualifier. So again, the whole idea of this, and they're covered under the law. They're not gonna be charged with anything. This is, this is an outreach program to, to help people. It's in place. It's approved in Plymouth County. It's up and running. So I understand your concerns, but I don't think it's any violation of anybody's rights.
Okay, both set? Good. I'm gonna move on to your next point.
The next one is, I'm asking the board to approve for, at least, try to help us approve a civil bylaw policy. It's something that the town's lacking and it's something that should be in place to protect us. It certainly can protect the community. It's used mostly for people that wanna go door-to-door or ice cream trucks. You could even use it for bar owners, people that sell alcohol. Right now, the police are allowed to run query checks on criminal matters. This is, would be in place for us to run query checks and fingerprints on people for civil. And again, the reason for that, I want it for not only to protect the town but the residents. When I do the, the door-to-door salespeople, our bylaw is in place. But again, without this civil bylaw, I can't run query and fingerprints. This would allow us to run fingerprints. And we'd certainly know who people are. You can have people come from Florida or anywhere and they wanna come in and sell door-to-door. And we really don't know who they are. And they could have a pretty bad background. So this is something that's common in a lot of communities. The attorney general promotes it. The bylaw would have to be accepted by the voters at town meeting and with your support. And then it would have to be approved by the attorney general. So it's not something we're just making up on our own. But I just feel really strongly about it. Again, I wanna protect the residents as much as we can with people that wanna solicit in Groveland. And then you can go as far as you want with it. But it's just a tool to really look into who's coming to our town and who wants to go banging on doors. So I've, I've done the best I can. I just, for the first time, I have a pretty in-depth application for people to fill out. I'm gonna have photos taken of them. And I wanna issue them a, actually a license, you know, that they can display. So that's in the progress. I just, I got half of it done. But this is something that I really like to see the town support. Again, for the, just for the liability-wise and for the ability to run people properly.
So right now, you're not running record checks on people that come in?
No. I'll look and see if there's maybe a BOP summary or something. But legally, we can't, we certainly can't do fingerprints. And we can't do query. And what we do, it's more, as you can imagine, it's more isolated to what we have locally. But again, you have a lot of people that wanna solicit and...
Do you have a sample bylaw that you can present to us?
No, I have the, just the town bylaw with me tonight. But I have, they do have templates and I could get one from another town.
Yeah, that would be helpful. I'm very familiar with this because with people that I, we, we actually want people to go through that process.
Yep.
If they're working for Comcast or any other entity doing sales door-to-door, there should be that process
Yes.
to run a record check. You certainly wouldn't want somebody who has a sex offense to be going door-to-door in a community without having the ability to run their record.
I have great concerns with people being able to go door-to-door anyways. And I've already had problems with a couple people and I wouldn't let them stay out after dark. And then there was another one that I gave them approval, but I didn't know they had people around the corner that would actually come in and do the product for you. And I didn't know they were there. So I booted them out and told them to come see you guys and they never did. But I wanna do the most I can to, at least we know that these people have been checked out. And I think the residents deserve that, you know, to know that we've done the best we can to approve them being on the property.
So this is more or less to regulate who's coming into town and soliciting door-to-door or...
No, the town already has a bylaw in place that allows it. And there's a procedure that you have to do. This would give me, and the town, if you wanna issue, let people sell like alcohol licenses and, and other taxi licenses, you can do other things with it as far as the civil fingerprint policy because you could put them through the same background. I'm using the example of the solicitors because that's what I deal with mostly.
It's basically third-party risk is what you're talking about. So it's a, it's a mechanism to ensure that there's no third-party risk to the community as a result of somebody coming into the community, knowing what their background is, to ensure that there isn't a risk to the community.
Yeah, and it's just, again, this is recommended from the attorney general. There is a master no law on this. So this isn't something that I'm asking us to make up, you know, a new law just for Groveland. It's just, I don't know why it's never been in place, but...
So are you asking us to take a vote on it? Or would you like to send us some template language that you're proposing that we would use?
I would like you to support it and if you agree. But if you're more comfortable reading it and seeing what you're voting on, I could certainly do that for you. I started with this stage just to see if it's something you're open to or...
I think it'd be difficult for us to, I know I would personally, it'd be difficult for me to vote on anything I hadn't seen. So I don't know what I'm voting on. It would be, it would be appreciated, I think, if we could get a copy of what you're talking about so that we can all understand it more.
Yeah, I don't think I'd expect you just to listen to me for these few minutes and just accept it because there is a lot to it. There's the, there's the master no law. The attorney general has information on it. I could, as, as you said, maybe get a template or a local. I know the towns around us, some of them have them.
That'd be helpful, I think.
Okay.
How about drawing up, drawing up the article for, for the town meeting? And I assume that's something that could be passed at a special town meeting if we have one. And so if you can draw something up that we could vote on it, send it to a, to a town meeting vote and, and get that done as soon as possible.
That'd be good.
As soon as, as soon as we have a scheduled town meeting.
Okay.
Is there anything we can put in place short-term to have the people automatically go to you? Or it's already in place?
Well, they do come to me and I, like I said, I do the best I can, but it's limited. Really, for the police to be running query checks, it's, it's gotta be criminal. You have to have reason. You can't just run people either for the heck of it. This would allow us to send it to the FBI and the state. So people that, not even from the area, we're gonna be able to know if they were, if they want it. Well, I check them out to see if there's warrants. I shouldn't say I don't do anything. But this would give us a background on, you know, somebody might have some serious crime history and it could be for...
I was thinking of something short-term that we put in place until... I guess it's probably not that...
Sounds like you're managing it, though.
Yeah.
This is just another layer of protection, we say.
Yeah, it's huge. I'm following the bylaw. I mean, if you want me to not allow it for now, I'd do that too.
No.
No.
I wanna...
We don't want you to break the law.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think as soon as you can get us something, that would be helpful. Because then we could take a preliminary vote and then vote to put it on the...
Next town meeting?
Right.
Okay.
Or sooner, if we have a special action like Selectman Watson had said.
And I just have one last thing. As you can see, I'm into safety and doing the best we can. And I wanna focus my attention now on, we got the schools done with the cameras. And that's something I waited years and years for. And thanks to many of you on the board. We've, we've made great strides and doing some training for the officers. We just did our first drill down there that involved the police. So things are going really well. And another thing I've been trying to work on is security for the town hall. I have a lot of concern about the lack of security here. I don't think you can do enough to keep your employees safe and the residents that come in here. And then at the bottom of the list would be even your, your property, the, the structure itself. And I'd rather not go into detail how much it lacks right now. But I would, I'd talk to you guys anytime that you'd like. And but you probably know what's here and what's not. I can tell you, a couple of years ago, I did apply for a grant to get cameras for the town hall complex in the library. And I, I didn't get the grant. And then Denise tried last year, same. She tried, I think it was a different grant.
Just a few months ago, yeah.
A few months ago, and she didn't get the grant either. So we're at the point where I, I don't think we should wait. I don't think you can put a price tag on the, the safety of the employees here. And there have been a couple incidents. There's probably been a few over the last few years that have been unsettling and concerning. Nothing drastic, nothing that people have to be really concerned with otherwise. But I think cameras would have certainly prevented it. And it's a deterrent. And I think it's long overdue. I'd like to see them at the, the firehouse, same thing. There's, there's nobody over there. The outside building really is just on its own. The library, the same thing. We've had a couple concerning incidents over at the library the last couple of years. And I'd like to propose and looking for support. And this really isn't my place otherwise. I know I run the police department. But in my position, I just, I'm really passionate about this. And thanks to Denise, she's had a lot of patients with me listening and going on and on about the, the lack of security here. And I know Denise has just moved forward with some alarms for inside. So things are going well there. But I've worked with Wayne Alarm and I got pricing with Denise for the, the central fire station to upgrade the summit of police station, all of this complex and the library. And I'm talking to Denise about funding. I know that's always a concern, that we would need up to fifty thousand dollars to do this. That would also include upgrading, or not upgrading, but adding maybe three to five cameras at the Bagnell that we found. Now that they're up and running, that there's some areas that really should have cameras that don't. And if we could get up to fifty thousand dollars,[1586.24] And, um, if we could get up to fifty thousand dollars, it would cover everything I just said. And I'm talking to Denise, there is funding available in the, uh, that cable account fund that was utilized in the past. Otherwise, I don't have any other ideas about funding, and I know, you know, we're financially responsible, but again, I don't think you can put a price tag on, on the people and our property and even the residents coming in here.
Well, just to avoid spilling out too many details, why don't we take the rest of that conversation offline? And maybe we can meet and walk the, um, the grounds to discuss it in further detail, and then we can decide how we can find the money. Yes, Selectman Wood.
Um, would it be possible to do that in stages, or promote that as stages as opposed to a one-time fee or one-time payment? So do like the main central thing as far as the server, either for the town hall complex or for the fire department, the police department complex? And then add to it a little bit every year till we get up to full speed instead of biting off fifty thousand? And then part two of that with the school, I know that that was upgraded as far as the whole system goes, so it should be somewhat easy just to plug in new cameras, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that would be simple. Again, if you have the money, I'd ask that you, you know...
Well, yeah, if you have the money, it'd be...
We'd buy the world.
Denise referenced that we did have the funding, that's why I'm asking for it all. It's not for me, it's for these other buildings. You'd have to prioritize, and that's something we can do. So yes, we could do it, but this has been in the works, or behind for so many years that it seems like it keeps going on and on, and it's just, I think there's a risk involved, again, not just to the people, but which is the number one priority. But just your buildings, you know, and, um...
Just a follow-up question. So, right now, dispatch, I'm assuming, I'm just concerned about there being one person at dispatch that's monitoring all these cameras. It seems to be, is that going to be manageable if you add these cameras?
No, no, thank you for your concern, because that's one thing that I couldn't commit to. I can't have a dispatcher like to be solely responsible for that. They've done a good job seeing a couple things down at the Bagnell already, just because they see a light, but they're not looking up at that camera. So it's not going to be monitored and have a dispatcher, just can't steer at it. But if nothing else, again, I think it's a deterrent, it's a great tool if there is a problem.
Well, yeah, I think we should talk about this more, because I agree with Chair O'Neill, that I don't want to necessarily discuss all the nuances for people that...
Yeah, no, I, that's what I'm trying to mention today. I'd like to see support for it, but, um, and when you talk about going forward, once we, if we could get this all done, you talk about going down the road, there are some parks around Groveland that wouldn't hurt to have a camera that, to keep the children safe. Again, another deterrent for bad guys is a camera. And, um, there's other areas, there's the, um, the other fire station that, there's a lot of money in that building, even if one of the firefighters falls out back and nobody sees him on the ice, or they, something that, it just, there should be cameras to, even if we go back and have to look later, but our building's on.
So I definitely support it in theory. I guess I think I'm going to need to hear a little bit more about what it would look like at the end, and the monitoring piece. But that's a piece that I think we could discuss further. I can't speak for my fellow members.
Yes, Selectman Dunn.
So I'm definitely in support of it, but like the chair said, maybe you and him can get together, and we can know what buildings we're talking about and try and get that up to fifty thousand to a better number? Because as we just went through with the, um, Alga, the housing complex, that kind of blew the whole thing because it wasn't a locked-in number.
Yeah.
So if this thing's going to pass, I think we're going to probably need to get a hardcore number on as best we can at least.
I can do that. I have a pretty high-end number right in front of me.
Okay.
But the reason I said up to fifty thousand is...
Right.
The, um, the extra that you could add to the Bagnell would be a little bit more. So I could put a cap on it and then not have, you know, open-ended.
Selectman Watson?
No, it's a, it's a great idea, it's a long time coming.
So may I ask the board, do you wish to have an executive session as a whole to discuss this further, or are you deterring to the chairman?
I think this may require an executive session. I mean, after I tour and we take this conversation offline, I'd like to be able to bring back the results and the specific details to the rest of the board members so that we can discuss it, uh, in an open forum or as open as executive session can get, so it's as much transparency as we can have on the situation as that amenable to everyone.
Yeah, and it is covered by the open meeting laws executive session, so we can schedule that.
You've got my number.
Okay.
Reach out to me anytime. We'll, I'll fit it in, for sure.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for coming and raising these concerns and bringing them to our attention. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for supporting on everything. Going well.
All pulling a rope in the same direction, right?
Yes, sir.
Makes life a lot easier.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the Groveland Day Discussion. I'm not sure who wants to...
So this was Tracy's agenda item.
Is this Mr. Guilford's agenda item?
Yes.
It was my agenda item, Tracy Guilford for Abbott Circle. It was my agenda item because I had been approached by some people with interest in Groveland Day, hadn't happened for a few years. People were interested to see it happen again. I did make contact with the rec committee, so I don't know if somebody wants to report from their last meeting, what had transpired. Do you want to come up to just speaker podium so that people can hear?
Yes, Mike, chairman. So basically, we, it was last year we didn't run it. So the reason why we stopped was really threefold. One was the time of the volunteers that put into it several years. They got burnt out, they had other things going on, and they had to step back, that was one. Two was the cost, every last two years that we were in it, it was a money loser, not even a break-even. We could always, fans achieve a break-even in the past, but it had become more costly to run it with the rides and all of the police presence got expensive, so it became tough to make it even a break-even. And enrollment, or attendance, I should say, really had dropped off a bit. So with those three factors, you know, we didn't have the wherewithal to continue it. So we declined. We had two residents that came forward during the winter that expressed interest in taking, taking a look to see if they would want to do it. They came to one of the meetings, we did talk to them, and they didn't get back to us on whether they wanted to proceed forward, so I think that is, they decided that they didn't want to. And that's fine. So that's kind of where we stand right now, is if there are people that are interested in driving it and running it, we're happy to be the background and support of that. But, you know, we don't have the wherewithal to do it with our right now. Yeah, no problem.
So even, even in a combined effort, you don't feel you have the number of volunteers you needed to pull this off?
If there were people that wanted to step forward, I mean, I think this year honestly it would be hard to do, only because of, you know, where...
Timing.
Timing, yeah. But certainly, if people were interested in saying, hey, I wouldn't mind doing it, because of people that did do it in the past, you know, they spent a lot of time on it, with their own time and energy and probably money, too, to do a lot of the work on that. So it would take time, and if you were willing to do that, absolutely, we'd be happy to support them and help them, you know, make that, make that possible.
Yeah, I happened to be driving by trying to get to Home Depot on Saturday, and I ran into that Home Day in Plastow.
Yeah, okay.
What an incredible event. Jeez, that would really be neat if we could have something like that here. I mean, I don't know if any of yous had the opportunity to see what goes on there, but jeez, it looks like everybody was having a heck of a good time. And it was all about civic pride and community involvement. It was really, looked like the whole town was there. I mean, they literally almost shut down the whole center of town to do it. So what we need is, as usual, more volunteers, Mike, more volunteers, right? More people step up to the plate, not the same people, but new people. And you'll be willing to assist, you just don't want to drive the bus.
Right, Mr. Chairman, so I'd like to, um, since I, I didn't want to step on their toes, so, um, I would like to come back for you in two weeks from now after. I want to touch base with some of the groups that said they wanted to, to see if they will follow through. It might not be a Groveland Day as we know it in the past, but it might be an event to tackle when this happened.
A rebirth, a rebirth.
So it'll be a small, very small event, you know, but it will be an event. I'd like to come before the board in two weeks, you know, just to say, yes, I was approached by these groups that they wanted to participate and get your feedback, whether you want to see it go forward or not.
Sure, I appreciate your effort. I mean, every redwood starts with a single seed, right?
Yep, all right, thank you.
I think Selectman Watson wants to...
Mike, just, uh, just a question. You noted, you mentioned that the last couple of years, that the last couple of years that you were running it, that you noticed a decline in attendance.
Right.
I, do you think that a change of venue would be helpful?
We, you know, it changed over the years to where, from where it was, because many years ago it was up here in the complex, and we had moved down the pines. And then, you know, even on the pines, we changed venues. And a couple of years ago, there was a change in approaches to try to get more kids involved in the activities, so they would draw, you know, sporting events down, that would help draw the kids to it, and then, you know, mom and dad would come as well, type things, so they get more of an activity. So maybe, maybe venue change would, it certainly be something we could explore as part of the project.
I'm just wondering about the Bagnell School, whether that would be a better spot?
It's certainly something we could...
I mean, you would know more than I would, that, you know, would you think the change in attendance going down was because of the venue, or not?
Yeah, I think if we wanted the kids involved in the fields down here at least, give that opportunity to do soccer events, or baseball, or softball events in the fields. I know that there's corny rise down the field, it's more of a field that maybe the school grounds wouldn't be as good to use for that, because...
Good fertilizer for the field.
It could be. I'd much rather appreciate it when it's closed down again, but sure.
Oh, well. All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick discussion, are there any other, who else want to add any? No, okay. Moving right along, we have Mr. Mike Houghton, the Chair of the Recreation Committee, to provide an update on the Pines Project, and any other comments that might be admissible.
Admissible, all right, fair enough. All right, so where are we at with the Pines, well, it's been a fair amount of work done. We still have some work left to do. And so where are we at is the, you guys saw the link to some piles that are down there. After that flood, and we had the additional dirt brought in, six inches of the top, so it was drained out. We had a few more truckloads to stop the drop-off that was occurring at the far end of the field down near the softball field and the road. That was done, then we had final grading down there, so we got, you know, levels in the pitches properly, so the drainage. So, you know, what's been done to date is the soil on the far side of the field is put in place, soil's been put down, the final grading's been done. We headed higher to seed, but what it's worth right now is more of a blinder than anything else, because we don't have a way to water currently, so that's been taken care of as well. So the remaining activities we have down there are left to do is really the water element. You know, that's going to be housing for the electrical, for the pump system, as well as the irrigation to go on one of the fields, because with the iron seed down there, Mother Nature's not going to help us enough, I think, to get it to grow, especially this time of year. So we're fighting the elements to make it that possible. So that's our biggest one. I did talk to Denise, I didn't just catch up with you yet, but the concern that we had was that the well output was going to be hard to make a field of that size, be able to be watered properly. And so if you look at the field size, you're looking at, you know, roughly sixty-eight thousand gallons plus water per week.
We need during the growth season to water the fields. That well output is twelve, fifteen gallons, has capacity, so that would take anywhere from seventy-two to ninety-six plus hours of water a week, so, and, you know, tax the thing out. So two options we're looking at right now is to, we show we add some water, is looking at a pump system, pumping a tank system, and a tank that'll be able to handle the heads. And the second system would be to relook at, you know, stopping that, leaving that the way it is and doing a draw from the river again, is our option.
Yes, Mr. Selectman Dunn.
Do you know how many zones you're talking down there?
We're talking ten zones.
Ten zones? How many heads to a zone?
Uh, there's a total of fifty heads.
Fifty heads to a zone?
No, no, fifty heads total.
Fifty heads total? So if you were to run that system as we did at the Bagnell, I think there was close to, close to forty, right?
Yeah, probably forty.
What we ended up doing at the Bagnell School, is we broke it up to seven heads per zone, start the system at eight o'clock at night, and do them, and it would shut off at like six o'clock in the morning. So I think that field down there is about the same size, and we were getting about the same output over there. You need five gallons per minute per head. So if you're running, you know, seven heads, thirty-five gallons a minute, if you take the ten zones, if you get ten zones, I think it could, it could work.
Yeah, the feeling was, for how long, and it's only going to really cover that field? So I was looking at an alternate to say, if the, because the football league would like to run a practice field on the other open space, so that well couldn't possibly handle that.
I think unfortunately, if you look at the well that's down there for the town right now?
Yeah.
I've heard, rumored, they're having problems with that well.
Right.
Reason is, is because that you got a lot of, in this town, you have a lot of sand, you got a lot of soap.
Right.
You're going to have that problem.
Right.
So, I mean, to make this, you know, I understand what you're saying, we've got money invested in that. Why don't we carry through with that pump to try and at least water that field? And then when we go to a next project, maybe talk about a pump and whatever?
So I'm concerned for the long haul build. We've had that well down there now for the baseball and softball field?
Yep.
That, I guess I understand it got turned back on, but there was, that's had, I don't know, two years not working right, or probably estimated two years? And that's, that's a constant battle with the sand element in that one. And that's handling those two fields. If we, if we spend another, you know, five to fifteen-plus thousand or more to finish out this field, to have a well that maybe we get a year, two years out of it before we have complications, it seems like we're throwing good money at that.
But you're talking complications, you're talking a dirty, a dirty filter, is what you, that's complications. It's a matter of...
Why, why did the current one sit there for two years not working?
I don't know, I can't explain that, but I'm just saying that it's, there's a well point down there, and the well point clogs with sand or soap. You have to pull it up, and it's a maintenance issue.
Right.
What matters to a well if the water continuously comes in?
Right.
When the water doesn't come in, it dries up, it's a bad well. But if the water's coming in and it's just getting soaked, that's a maintenance issue. So I don't...
So it's, the concern is to pull out of it for the number of gallons needed to, whether it can sustain it and for what duration. So I need to talk to Denise about the alternative plan, because I think there's a plan that will work as well or better, in fact, better, I would say. And we've got now, and allow for future expansion, whether it be to have to take over the other two fields that are having some issues potentially, or for future expansion for, for the other field areas that we originally looked to do. I think we'd be better off with an alternative. So that's, that's what we're looking at right now.
So, yes.
Couple of years ago, when we started looking at doing wells and stuff down there, one of the options was to draw from the river.
Right.
And for whatever reason, that was deemed too expensive and inefficient enough. And now, two years later, we're looking at drawing from the river as an option.
Yeah.
Because the current system isn't working.
No, current system isn't installed yet, so we haven't gone all the way yet.
But we've drilled the wells, and we had to keep going deeper and deeper and deeper, because for some reason, next to the river, we can't get any water from a well.
Probably because you want sand, I would guess.
Right, so rather than just trying to guess at what the best solution is, can we kind of go forward and have a better idea of how to go about getting the water?
I feel I do, Mike, on this one. I feel like, you know, mathematically, we went down there with, I went down with the contractor last week. We mathematically laid out what the requirements are for the field, and what it would take gallon-wise, what it would take for output-wise, what it would take for electricity-wise to run the system down there, and to look at a system that was going to last longer.
Longer than two years, then, you said, you just said two years, right? That if you redo it and make it last two years?
If you're lucky, I mean, if you're looking at sixty-eight thousand gallons per week out of that system, pumping twelve to fifteen gallons a minute, I don't know how long that's going to last.
But what would it take to put a tank in the ground and then use that, you know, fill the tank and then use the tank to actually use for the sprinkler heads? What would that cost to do?
Uh, it would cost, so to pull out of the river would be a third less than to finish out a system that would have the tank in the ground. It would actually be cheaper.
Okay.
My understanding is we're allowed to take up to a hundred thousand gallons per week out of the river without state approval.
Didn't Penn Tucket do that?
Penn Tucket does it.
And I remember the conversation a couple of years ago, that we were looking at, Penn Tucket was doing it, why don't we do it? And we decided that whatever the information was, that we're going to drill a well, and now we're looking...
I wasn't part of that discussion.
Right, and now all of a sudden, we're back to, well, maybe we should just go to the river. You know, and now it's just, it's aggravating to think that we might have just wasted time and money
True.
At a solution that may have been known not to be the most efficient, where going to the river might have been more expensive, but it would have been completed and working, and we wouldn't have had any issues. That's really what I'm getting at.
Potentially, correct.
Is there a salt content in the river up this end?
You know, my understanding from, because I did look at the stats that Penn Tucket did, and that was a couple of years ago, when they did their testing for pulling out of the river, salt was not an issue, no, no was pollutants, believe it or not, an issue, so...
And I know the, I know, I was at the Penn Tucket when they did that system, and I walked it.
Yep.
They're in an area up there where there's, it's a basin area where they're pulling it out of. It's a very mild basin, where there's not a lot of water, current and water flow.
Right.
And I know when we looked at this, doing that pump up here, that they were talking about the equipment getting taken away in a big storm or whatever. Have you guys looked into that, if somehow making sure that equipment's not going to, the piece that goes out into the...
Into the river itself, yes. Both flow and also if the river would ever run low as it did several years ago, be able to have cut off on it so that we wouldn't have that issue as well. So, yes.
So there's not a problem with the tide current?
No.
Okay.
My understanding of it.
Okay.
No, I'm all set, it sounds like Mike's going to handle it and everything.
I feel very confident in Mike's ability. He's very meticulous in when he looks at things.
Awesome, I love to hear that word, because what I was hoping to get is basically a project timesheet. You say, you know, my item, when I expect to have it done?
Yeah.
Approximate cost, so that we can all keep track of this kind of progress.
I do have that myself, but my fear is, until I talk to Denise about pricing on these, you know, we, I want to make sure we follow due process, so that we're not stepping outside the envelope on talking numbers, but I do have those figures.
Is it something that if we gave you a month, you could come back to us? What I want to try to avoid is kicking the can down the road.
Believe me, I do as well.
We just...
Been a lot of time and energy put into it already, and there's a lot of people that put a lot of, a lot of their own sweat labor into it, so...
And I'd like to see them, you know, see the fruits of their labor.
I couldn't agree more.
I'm terrible with my patience, I've been in therapy for a long time, I'm just not getting any better at it. I try every day, but some of these things that just seem to go on in this town forever just irk the living bejesus out of me sometimes.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. I, I want to get this thing done, I want, I want the kids to be able to use that field. I mean, there's a lot of effort to put in there, right now it looks terrible because it's a pile of weeds, but, you know, I think when it's done, it's going to look really nice, and I think it's, it's there for the long haul, because we, we didn't skimp on the soil, we didn't skimp on the grading, we've got a conduit running across the field for future electrical use for, for lights, and I think if we take the water and handle that properly, I think that it'll be there for the long term, which is what we'd all like to see.
That's what we want. We want value for our dollar, that's what you all want in life. Couple of other things, I guess. Are there any plans, I, I know this has been mentioned to me by other people, and I've, it's been a real concern of mine for a couple of years, the speed at which some cars go through that parking lot. Is there any plans, in your plans, to put in some kind of, uh, speed reduction devices in that parking lot, so that, right now, the design of that, the pines is poor, only because you have the ball fields on one side of that parking lot, and the playground on the other.
I agree.
And it, it's, it's, it's not the older kids that play in the ball fields, it's the younger children that are going back and forth to their mothers or fathers that just don't have a clue, and they die out there like a rabbit, you know, a greyhound chasing a rabbit. And I think it's just a matter of time before there's a catastrophic accident in that parking lot, and, and one of which I so wish to avoid at all costs. Is that in your plans at all?
It's not, but I mean, I, I share your concern, I know Dan has the same issue of some recent events down there. I, I totally share your, your concern, I, I guess that's something that, you know, we'd have to talk, but that'd fall under the purview of the highway department, I would think, but I could be wrong in that.
Yes, so I spoke to Bob Arcalion after we got Dan's email, and part of the difficulty down there was it's so wide in sort of that middle area, but he said that he could look to, when they come back out to do paving, that he could look to put in some speed bumps, maybe down the first entrance, and maybe one as it narrows down a little bit. But to put one across that whole middle section, he said it would be really long, and I guess impact some of the parking. So he could certainly look to put something down there as, as, by way of permanent speed bumps.
I thought the issue was the plowing, though.
Yes, so, well, that comes an issue, because in the past, the highway department does not normally plow the pines, but now with the dog park, people have been calling us, asking us to plow it, so they never plowed that in the wintertime.
Okay.
He prefers not to. So that was the issue, was why he did not put deterrence when they redid that, because of, but he normally does not plow that, so I don't know how we deal with the dog park.
So it is being plowed by the highway department, or it is not?
They did it last time when we called, because people would call and complain, but it's not normally on their route to plow in the winter.
Yeah, so I just wondered if there were, I've seen some places just have those temporary speed bumps that are removable.
Yes, and we did look at those. Again, part of the issue is it's so wide down there, that we would need several of them to go across in the same area, so we went back and forth, and if it was really an issue, then he said he'd prefer to just put the asphalt speed bumps and just make them permanent.
Yeah. Plowing shouldn't be an issue, I, I can't imagine, because there's speed bumps everywhere in the state, and they plow those roads. But Selectman Dunn had a very unique, um, solution to that problem of the width, maybe he'd like to discuss it.
No, I was saying if they had, and it's going to cost money, obviously, if they had put a couple islands out and narrowed that area with a couple islands, maybe did some...
And staggered them?
Yeah, maybe did some landscaping in there or something like that.
Sure.
I guess my question is to go one step further, would be, and I've said this before, and I know people think I'm critical or whatever, what do you guys want, I should say, is it a field that you guys are going to be handling, only handling? I think the problem, again, we're back to having this conversation again, who is handling the pines project? Is it the highway? Is it the rec? Where are we at? And we're back here again, and I know, I know, Mike just said a couple of minutes ago, he's frustrated because he's just spent money on a well.
Right.
And now we're scrapping the well idea, and we're going someplace else. It seems like we're right back to where we were a long time ago. One hand doesn't know what the other hand's doing. And, and I know I'm not, you guys work very hard, we do, I appreciate what you do, I'm not saying that.
Sure, I understand.
I said, we need to get a good grip on what's going down.
Sure.
On down there, and...
Well, you could ask the same thing, like, what about the bathrooms, what's going on those, right?
Well, that's the whole thing.
Absolutely.
The whole exact thing, and that's what I'm saying.
Have you been paying attention? Every week I ask, when can I tinkle in that toilet?
So, what I'm saying is...
No, actually, Bill, just to answer your question, our focus has been the fields themselves, not the infrastructure of the roads and the drainage and all that, that was, that was handled by the, I believe, the highway department.
Right, and I would say that should be regardless of, I mean, that really wouldn't be a volunteer committee to look at the actual infrastructure of the roadway.
Right.
So you guys are handling the fields.
Correct.
So where do we find someone that's going to actually, actually, are we going to the highway to take care of the roads? I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm confused on what, what we need to do to get this thing done.
Like, yeah, so...
That's exactly what it sounds like, we have to go to...
So the highway handles the roads, they handle all the roads in town, so I guess...
We're talking about the pines, I'm talking about the, down there, is that considered a town road?
It's, it's still roads in town, yes.
Sure.
So if you're talking about the actual road that's in the pines, that falls under the highway department.
Right.
So the other, the other thing we want to make sure that we, if, if budget allows, right, once the wells, the water issues addressed, we'll know, is whether we can put some kind of guardrail down around the field, so we don't have people that accidentally step on the gas like you see on the news all the time.
Or intentionally.
Or intentionally, correct. So we want to make sure that that gets addressed as well, so, but that's going to boil down to what, what remains of the, of the money that was allocated.
Right, right. Now, the entire pines complex have, I don't think that field that you've sorted recently is going to be...
I wish we sorted it.
Oh, yeah. That you've seeded, you've loomed and seeded.
Correct.
Is that going to be available for use by the youth football group this fall?
Absolutely not.
Okay, do they know that?
They do.
Okay. So that you've made arrangements that, now you won't be affected. I just didn't want to see those guys getting hung out to dry.
Well, hopefully not, but I mean, I, I, you know, we did, we have, we have discussed with them, yes.
And the last part I wanted to discuss with you, because I'm just looking at you as kind of the gatekeepers of the entire pines, is there any plans, and I know this is going to make me one of the most unpopular people in the, you know, whole town, but you know what, whatever, are there any plans to move the dog park away from the ball field? I gotta tell you...
You know, that's one thing...
Well, yeah, because if I'm the right fielder in that ballpark, I tell you, I'm almost sick almost every time I go out there on a hot summer day.
Absolutely.
That's gotta be, if the ball gets hit over there, I don't want it back.
No, I know.
Actually, actually, this fairy-worm cut them does not smell. They, they really take care of it. I would not say that there's, have you been down there?
I, I, I've been, I've been down there, and you've got some folks that aren't even using the dog park, and, and I've got a shoe as an example of it. And I was nowhere near, nowhere near the dog park.
Right, that's a separate issue, but the people who use the dog park are pretty meticulous about picking up after themselves.
And I bet you that, that they'd still continue to be meticulous about cleaning up after themselves, but...
Can I, can I address all that? Dan Stewart, Groveland Recreation, Matthew Drive. I spend probably six, seven hours a weekend down there grooming the baseball field, the softball field, picking up trash, running practice for baseball and softball. Three and a half weeks ago, on a Saturday, the fifth, sixth graders were on the softball field practicing, I was at the batting cage with my 13-year-old Babe Ruth team, doing tee work and batting cage work. I look up, and there's a black SUV with New Hampshire plates, a Jeep, I don't know what kind of Jeep it was, flying through the parking lot, and a little girl got out of the car, and her mother got out at the same time, thank goodness, grabbed her arm, she would have been run over by that vehicle. The vehicle was probably going 25 to 30 miles an hour, right past the backstop. You know how many kids, people are walking back and forth there? So I don't know who moved the dog park entrance from the boat ramp to that side, but it's created a huge, huge danger. The kid, the kids are riding their bikes down there on the, on the dead field, they ride in the parking lot behind the backstop, and people, and no offense to the people that are going to the dog park, I know they want to get there, and I can see the three dog heads hanging out the window, but they're flying through the dog, the, the parking lot where the softball and baseball people are parked, and kids are walking back and forth and riding their bikes. It's crazy. I mean, I've, in the last weekend, a little boy almost got hit on his thing. He was smart enough to turn his bike around before he went out in the parking lot. But like you said, something's going to happen, and it's not going to be pretty. I've seen it twice in three weeks. Secondly, we had the Escondido softball tournament on Father's Day, the fifth, sixth grade finals and the seventh, eighth grade finals. Not only, I couldn't access the field, because there was cars parked in front of the gate on the left field side where I bring in the, the dragger to drag the field, but all you can smell is urine and poop, and it was a, it was a, you know, a humid day, and the comments from the boxer team were, this really stinks out here, you know? I'm like, nothing I can do about that. So I think it's unsanitary. I know, I know they pick up after themselves, I watched them, for the most part, for the most part, but this also leads to people walking their dogs around the park, around the batting cage, over to the baseball field, over the soccer field, and I've witnessed many times, and I've stepped in it many times, around the batting cage. They're pooping there and they're leaving it there. When you have a dog park in a public ball field facility, this is what's going to happen. My, my opinion is the dog park should be removed and put either somewhere near where the water department has their, their open space over there, away from the fields, or put it in Strawberry Fields. It should not be attached to the outfield of the softball field. It was, it was bad at the boat ramp side, now it's really bad, because it's a speedway to get to that left field entrance.
I, I...
And I understand, people are in a rush, they want to get their dogs, you know, ran and, and get home and, and do their thing. I have a dog, I don't bring it to the dog park, but, you know, I just, I think something needs to be done.
I think we, I, I think everyone here shares your concern about getting some more safety in, in that parking lot, it is, it's just a dragway sometimes. And relocation, I'm not sure how it ended up there, the dog park, it probably, in hindsight, and it's always hindsight, it's always 20/20, probably wasn't, if we'd all agreed, probably wasn't the best place to put it.
Well, the initial proposal was for it to be where that water area is, but there was resistance, and there was the view that it would contaminate, because there's some water stuff over there.
The well.
Yeah, that it would contaminate the well. So that's the reason that, I'm not saying that it was...
It's the same runoff into the river, uh, when it rains, I mean, if I can smell it, both dog poop and dog urine, then obviously, it's there. They don't go into the porta-potties to do that, that's what the, the humans do, but it's, it's an unsanitary spot for that, it really is.
It's a big town.
It is.
I, I think if, if we all put our heads together, we can come up with a better spot.
But it's not just, it's not just Groveland people using it. As I said, it was a New Hampshire plate, I see New Hampshire plates all the time. So they're coming down from Plastow, they're coming from the other side of Haverhill, I understand that, I, I know they're coming over the bridge. Put it, put it in Strawberry Fields, there's nothing there. It's a big, vast, open space, why not? There's no kids running around there through parking lots, they're going to get run over by cars speeding to a dog park. I just think, I just think it's, it, it, for the town's safety. And you do need some speed bumps down there, you need them at, at the corners and at the entrance, and you need them behind the, as you're entering that area.
Could, I want, could we get a sign up there, maybe as well, you know?
Yeah.
Speed limit 15 miles an hour, or, you know, something like that? There is not, there's nothing that slows anybody down right now.
Even a temporary is pretty, it's a quick fix, but it's pretty cheap, you can get those temporary ones.
I have no problem throwing down one of those tracks that they use to stop the, the, you know, the...
Yeah, the plastic ones, take them up...
No, no, the spike strips, the spike strips.
Well, Chief Gillen had, had some, some great points about safety down there, you know, and we should have cameras down there as well, on the sheds and on the fields. The things that I picked up, I won't even, you know...
Sure, if we ever get the bathrooms still open, yeah, I agree.
The things I found in the porta-potties, the things I found in the dugouts.
We don't want to know.
No, you don't want to know, because I have to put rubber gloves on to get rid of them.
Yes.
So moving forward, we already heard Mike talk about the rec is going to take the fields, that's their thing, the fields.
Sure.
Okay? So we still have a problem on making sure on how we're going to get the speed bumps taken care of, the roads issues, bathroom issues, and the dog park issues. So where do we go from here? So that's my question.
Is there a problem removing the dog park and moving it somewhere else, out behind the, where the water entrance is?
Well, there's always a cost associated, and it's always, who's going to do it?
The fence is there, pick up the fence, I, I understand, it's a labor-intensive thing. I understand that.
Is there money down there?
Yeah, there's money in the, I mean, the dog park, I would say, we're solely on this group right here. Whatever you want to do with it, that's you guys. There's money available in that account if you want to...
So, and does the dog park people, they don't pay to use that facility?
No.
No. So there's no money, there, no, no revenue to get back. So people that use the boat ramp, and I know it's a whole different thing, and they put an expensive boat in there, they pay money, 25 bucks for a key.
Yes.
What would happen if we turned around, made a proposal, find someplace to move the dog park, when it gets moved, we turn around, it's $10 for free. They have to pay $10 for free to use that dog and put a lock on it. Now you stopped the New Hampshire people, or whatever, I'm not saying it's staying where it is, I'm just saying, down the road, now there's, there's expenses, you got to pay, get the trash boughs, you got to dump the poop, and whatever, there's expenses there. I mean, I don't know.
How do you enforce it?
Well, I don't know how you enforce it, but I have to say, as somebody who's used the dog park, that that's a huge issue. When that dog park was first open, it was primarily Groveland people.
Sure.
And then word got out.
Yeah.
And it's not a good thing that everybody from every other town comes, it's not, it wasn't designed for them. And not to say that, I don't know what mechanism could be used, but, but I agree that...
Lisa, like you said, most of the people are respectful and they do a good job, it's, it just takes one guy going to...
There's always a couple of bad people that ruin it for everybody.
Well, that's it. And, and why not, with the basketball quarters, where you go right into where the water well is, right on the right-hand side, there's nothing, no one uses that.
Well, that's, that's the area that was looked at before.
Yeah, I understand. But it's far enough away from the water tank. I mean, it's not a big park. And can I be honest with you? There's dogs always down there anyways, going to the bathroom. And they don't pick up after themselves. I've picked it up. And I, I think that's a problem. It's, it's a sanitary issue, you know, kids shouldn't be walking in it. I mean, what is the park for? It's for our children, it's for our youth programs. It's not to entertain seventeen different towns in the area to let their dogs run around and go to the bathroom. And I have a dog, I'm not, nothing against him, but it's, I think it's being abused at this point. And now that I'm seeing a speeding issue through a main part of the parking lot, where kids are riding bikes and walking through to get to their sister's ballgame, it's dangerous.
Why can't there be something, Denise, where, for instance, I know some other communities, and maybe it isn't a park, but like Methuen has like a pond or a lake, you have to be a Methuen resident. So if you were a resident, you would get a sticker for use of that area. And if you're not a resident, you don't get a sticker.
Right, so a couple of things, though. Any land that uses CPA funds, you cannot restrict it to residents only. So that's why, you know, even if you looked at Strawberry Field, although the, the main part of Strawberry Fields was purchased with taxpayer money, so you could do that. The second point would then be, how do you enforce who has a sticker and who's down there?
And then you have police down there.
You're at twenty-four, it's not cost effective.
That's why I was saying, if you came into town hall and you paid ten dollars or whatever, I shouldn't say ten, I should, a dollar amount. If they had to come in here, pay the money and get a key, now it's a little bit more controlled. That's all I'm saying.
And that's fine, too. And I will say, I follow the cars in the morning, I come over the bridge, and there's usually three or four cars in front of me that take a left right into the pines and go down to that dog park. So, I mean, I see it, too, that, and we have had complaints, not about dog park people, but we have had dog complaints at the pines.
Sure.
We've had some people saying there've been aggressive dogs running loose. I've called the police when they're running loose, they run up to the town hall, they're sort of blocking the cars. So we have had some issues in general.
There's been dog fights in the park a few times.
But I, I don't think it's, I mean, I don't think it's the Groveland dog park people. I think it's the out-of-town, and I think it's the people that are not controlling their dogs, just letting them run wild down there, that really are the crux of the problem.
But now we not only have the potential for Groveland people to do that, but then you've added in the variable of people coming from other towns, who then aren't even watching their dogs, so...
So this is, maybe we can make this an agenda item for...
The immediate concern is where the new entrance is, it really is dangerous. If there was a camera on there, you'd see what I'm talking about. It's, it's, I'm sure it's, I'm not down there all the time, so I'm sure it's happening more than, than the two times that I saw it. And I think if you move it to the other side, they're not going to be racing through the parking lot. Because they come in, they're right there. Kids don't play over there, there's no kids over there, except in soccer in the fall, in the outside of the baseball field.
Understood. Maybe we can make it an agenda item at a future meeting to, for to discuss the details. And I just have one more question regarding the pines. Do you have any plans to rehabilitate the playground? Is that under your purview? No. Got a guy sitting next to you, real close to you, might have some money.
We were looking for tennis courts for one point, too.
Well, I'm looking for, say, Plagon, because right now there's a ride over there called the concussion. It's a ladder that goes to nowhere.
Oh, yeah, it's dangerous, yeah.
Yeah. So you climb up the ladder, you fall off, you get a concussion. It's a great, great, great ride, but I'm not sure I'll have my kids riding it.
I think it should be a...
So, leaving here tonight, could we send a letter over to the road commissioner and discuss that? We talked about the speed bumps, the bathrooms, and I guess the dog park, it sounds like it's going to be a different agenda item, because I don't think that's the road commissioner it sounds like, on that end of it?
Yeah. Like I said, I talked to him about the speed bumps when I got Dan's email, so I can follow back up and talk to him.
Terrific. Anybody else have any questions of the recreation committee? I want to thank all you gentlemen and ladies for coming. I appreciate your time and efforts and everything you do. Don't get me wrong, I'm not here to criticize you, I'm here to see if I can lend any support, any hand you need, so we can come to a successful completion of all these projects we get going for the enjoyment of everybody in our community. That's what we're all about, right? So appreciate your time, your effort, and thank you for coming. So moving right along, we have Fire Chief York to discuss his EMS vehicle. Yes, sir?
Richard York, Roland Fire Chief, Habit Circle. So, we're here to discuss the final cost of the replacement of Squad One. So we've actually gone through the layout we had of the vehicle proposed. And we did remove a couple of things that we found probably not necessarily going to be as a benefit to what we're doing with it. And we've actually dropped it down, including the Knox box that we have to purchase separately, to about sixty-one thousand, just the herald of sixty-one thousand.
So it's a thirty-seven for the vehicle, and then the options?
Thirty-seven, correct.
Total of twenty-three-three.
And that is correct.
And the original, the original proposal, was that not for upwards of eighty?
Up to...
I hear a voice from the back, Ark. Started a hundred and five. So we've made significant progress in whittling that number down.
Yes, we have.
What was the amount we voted on?
Sixty-eight thousand is what was voted on. Sixty-five?
Sixty-five, so we're down almost four thousand from that.
You're still under budget?
Yes.
Is this vehicle going to satisfy all your needs?
Yes, because we're going from multi-use vehicle, doing medical responses and doing brush, to just a, just an EMS vehicle, where we have our, our new tanker, which is going to, which has made up for part of the brush side, plus our squad tube, or actually forestry tube.
What kind of life you think you'd get out of this vehicle? Two, three, four, five years?
This vehicle, fifteen to twenty.
Sweet.
We built it to spec where this is going to work for us as a quick response medical vehicle. It'll help us maintain our Class Five requirements, not having to lug around all that extra weight, that pump in the back. That, that was kind of really making that vehicle very unstable and heavy. You know, heavy and unstable. But initially, I know that capital improvement had based this on replacing the truck with a whole new body of right around two-hundred thousand. And, you know, we're down to getting it more towards just a single-use vehicle at sixty-one.
Saves us a lot of money. You expect a delivery date on that?
Well, we're still just kind of hashing out things, and then we can order it, so...
Do we have any ideas of when we can get it?
Three to four months after we...
Yeah.
Is one New York on the lot, and is one three to four months after we order it?
Yes, and I think when the board authorized the sixty-five thousand, it was to come back to let the board approve the quote that they provided, so...
Yes, sir.
This will be your primary vehicle for responding to a majority of your calls, right? Because a majority of your calls are EMS calls?
Yes, correct. And this could be the central version. We still have Squad Two, I believe, a Ford F-four-fifty out of south, which is in great shape.
And the current chief's car will remain the current chief's car?
That is correct.
Okay.
Slickman Watson.
That's the other way, Bill.
It's okay, I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Kapten, Ms. Slickman Dunn, any questions?
So the base vehicle's thirty-seven, and the upfits were roughly twenty-something. On the upfits, you're at beer bottom on the, on the outfit stuff, it's, that's...
That's pretty much, you know...
This is it, this is your bottom?
Bottom line, for safety, for lighting.
And it's, I know when you guys went before us, there were certain things in the vehicle that was in there now needed to be updated, some things you can move over, that's all we're thinking.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of the equipment's going to be moved over. We had to purchase some certain medical things, like a folding backboard, to meet, you know, our standards here, so that they'll slide in the back in our new box that we have built.
Right. In the vehicle that you're replacing, it's not worth keeping it in the department for a forestry truck, it's just not, okay?
Actually, at that point, we're probably just going to surplus that.
Are you going to strip the equipment out of it, completely?
At this point, we're looking at just stripping the, the equipment, the light bar, a couple of other things, but probably just going to leave the pump and just let it go as a unit.
So that would come back over to us and would...
Give back to you, and you can probably get a little bit of resale value on that.
Okay. I'm glad you...
Slickman Watson?
I don't think it sounds bad. If you're projecting a twenty-year lifespan, and with the cost, you're only talking about three thousand dollars a year, that certainly doesn't sound too bad at all. I looked at a lot of these, and it looks like they've cut down things, and it, hopefully we can get, get some final figures and get it out of bid.
Sure.
So do we need to make a motion to accept this vehicle tonight?
We might, but a couple of quick questions before we go. The technology package, can you explain that to me? It's a, it's a nice...
Actually, I'm going to allow Captain Briscoe to do that, since he was on the actual truck committee. Where are you, Bill, what?
I'm in the technology section, the ITL Core I-five, the processor with the...
Eighty-nine of twelve on the second floor.
Yeah, at the, at the bottom.
So that is a tablet and the keyboard that are going to be mounted in the vehicle for gathering information while we're at calls. That will initiate the patient care report. We can take a refusal from somebody electronically on scene, so we don't have a paper floating around in the cab. So it'll be an actual rugged tablet, similar to what Trinity has in their vehicles, that's removed from a bracket, and we can take it into the home or into the business, gather their information, birthday. Now we're writing it all by hand, we can gather it all electronically, and it will reduce efforts for us filling our patient care reports. In the future, we look to add this to the other squad. So it's kind of a newer technology that's come around in the last five years or so, that will help reduce some of our time when we come, we write it all down on paper, bring it back, and have to enter it into the computer at the station, so it'll reduce some efforts there.
Sure, sure. Now, the vehicle's going to last twenty years. I don't expect this piece of equipment to last more than three to five, tops, before the technology is surpassed by more efficient technology. What do you think the replacement cost of this might be?
I would say similar or less. I mean, when they come out with new stuff, it seems to be expensive, like the flat-screen TVs, and, you know, now they're eight hundred dollars, so... I mean, we'll have to, there's probably software that gets updated as it goes along. And we'll have to keep on top of it. We look to, we're going to look to at some point, get another one for the other squad, too, as well, so we have one in each vehicle. But we'll have to keep on top of it, with, that'll be kind of a medical item through our budget.
Right, I, I just...
Go with the PCR. We're looking at another PCR program as well, to try to reduce that cost. Because we're paying per, per PCR, patient care report now. We're meeting with another vendor to go over another program that's going to potentially reduce that cost.
Right. I'm just thinking, for future, you might want to try to start building some kind of reserve to, to pay for this. This equipment will become obsolete. Like I said, in three to five years, it'll need to be replaced or upgraded.
Yeah, but that's something they would just budget for on an annual basis.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They might want to think about budgeting for that, as opposed to five years down the road, hell, nuts, we need five grand to upgrade this equipment. And just one other question. The custom four-compartment latex glove holder with size letters engraved above opening.
What page is that on?
So that is a...
That's on the page before at the bottom.
That is a box to hold all the boxes of gloves. So right now, we have four different sized boxes of gloves, because my hand is much different than, you know, another person's hand. Because I take an extra large, but we have people who take smalls. So there'll be a central organized spot for all the boxes of gloves, and we won't be picking through boxes of gloves to find the size that we need.
Okay. So it's nothing engraved like, you know, Big Daddy or something like that?
L, M, and S.
Okay, all right. Good, just, um...
So the only other thing I wanted to mention here...
I'm sorry, I get down in the nitty-gritty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is on this quote here, it does not have the Knox box that's going to be mounted in the vehicle.
And it's an additional...
That's an additional six-thirty-seven, which brings it to sixty-one oh-two-eight.
Six hundred and thirty-seven dollars?
Sixty-one, sixty-one thousand and twenty-eight dollars, with the addition of the Knox box. And the reason that the Knox box is not listed on here is that we have to purchase it through us, because they are not allowed to purchase our Knox box. And then we will provide it to them, and then they can mount it.
Okay, and that's installed for six-thirty-seven?
That's, yeah, that's, I believe it's already accounted for in here to be installed.
And I'm glad you asked the question. Can you ask it again?
What, what is a Knox box?
Thank you.
Knox boxes are, are key access, so like outside of town hall here, you have a Knox box. So we can come up, unlock it, get the keys to get in, and a lot of industrial places, a lot of people now, residential's, with people that are elderly or getting sick. Saves us the hassle of having to break, break in the door or break some glass to get in to help them.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, and it is a secure place for the key.
It's a secure box for the key, so I have to put my last four, my social...
For the key to the vehicle?
No.
No, no. It's on, it's, yeah, yeah, my mother had one. It's bolted to the side of the house, and then there's a combination with the...
It has a key that only we have.
To open the door.
So we come here and open the box, and inside that box is the keys to the building.
So you're saying it's the key for other boxes?
It's the secure key to open all the boxes. Some residents, most businesses in town have an Knox box.
Oh, so, oh, okay.
So it's a secure key that has an audit trail, so inside that box, when I put my social in, I take the key out. It tells how long I had the key. We plug the laptop in and tell who took the key out, how long they had it. So it's kind of a, it's a good thing for businesses and residents to have, but we need to make sure that our key is secure, because I can go, you know, if you take the key, go to any business, open the box, and you have full access to the...
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? I'm all set. Thank you, it's tremendous job.
So I'd make a motion that we accept this proposal with the set amount to purchase the new EMS vehicle, as described on this quote.
Including the Knox box.
Including the Knox box from CMG Colonial Municipal Group. Second?
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Congratulations, you are no, a new Chevy Tahoe, or soon will.
And what is it, after four months, expect a delivery time?
Depends if we have to order it or not. If we get something that's on the lot already, then it'll be a little quicker.
Two to three, possibly four months. Excellent, yes.
So I have one more, one more question for the board here, is you had sent some emails for us to look at for the, I don't mean to hijack your agenda here, but to review the fire department review?
Yes.
That's going to be going on. So we did kind of review that, and for the most part, we're very happy with what, what you have. So we don't have any other inputs to put for that.
Awesome. So you think the scope of the work suggested is going to be sufficient and adequate to cover the needs?
And as far as which company you use, that's not up to me to influence you, this, that's your decision.
But you did see the reports, did you see the reports of the...
The completed reports, the samples?
The sample reports?
Yeah, I believe it does.
There was like three hundred pages or so.
Yeah, there's a lot.
There was a lot.
Did you, I mean, give an opinion?
A bunch of us reviewed it, and, and we just came up with a decision that, yes, it's, it's, the scope for all of them, or most of them are, you know, will handle pretty much what, what you need to look for.
Okay.
We just wanted to make sure it was thorough enough, in relying on some of your experience.
We did have a little input, but that's nothing I want to bring up here.
Yes, they were here for...
Terrific. Excellent. Glad to hear it. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have the fire department consultant discussion. I take it you all had a chance to read through that three hundred pages of information that we had? But maybe we can start with Denise on the, on the reference checks. Any negative feedback, any?
No, so I printed them out, I didn't want to give them to you ahead of time, because I was really writing as I was talking to the people I spoke with, so I will give them to you so you can review, but, you know, don't mind the grammar, because like I said, I was just kind of writing and talking. I spoke to three groups from each side. There were no negatives, other than, I mean, very few negatives, and it really, they weren't total negatives. I'll start with Municipal Resources, Inc. I spoke with North Andover, Manchester By The Sea, and Hadley. A couple people I spoke with actually had experience with both, the call-in center and MRI. It's funny, one of them said he would pick the call-in center, the other one said he would pick MRI. So I think it really just depends on who the team is and what the scope of work is. Overall, both companies, people were very happy, felt communication was really good, reports were clean, there was no influence one way or another, they were, they came in, they did the job that they were asked. I will say, the Manchester By The Sea said of MRI that he felt their report could have been a little more specific regarding strategies on the call side of things. He felt that some of their reports were cookie cutter. That was probably the only negative on MRI. But most of them have done multiple reports with these groups. The town of Hadley, they received a report from MRI with a hundred and sixty-six recommendations. They are actively engaged with that report and implementing the recommendations as time and budget allows, but they have committed to implementing as many of those recommendations as possible. He stated that not all the recommendations were liked, they were fully called department, and it was recommended to add four full-time employees, which they have now done over the few years since that report came out. His experience, so he also had experience with the call-in center. He said he felt that they produced a report which was not really the right size for Hadley, but he felt it was because they were partnered with a neighboring town that was much larger, and the call-in center was sort of focused on them, and it was tough to wrangle them into a smaller community like Hadley. He said it really wasn't the call-in center's fault, it was because they were partnered, and he felt like it was just sort of a product of what they were working on.
How big is Hadley?
Hadley, funny enough, he said there are thirty-five hundred, thirty-five hundred evening residents that grows to eighty thousand during the day. They have shopping malls, they have beaches, they have plaza.
Eighty thousand?
They estimate, Hadley, Mass.
Where is that?
He said they have four different shopping malls. He said it grows to about eighty thousand during the day, they are a very busy department. On the call-in center side of things, I spoke with the three references that they provided. I will say, the one difference between companies is MRI gave us everybody that they've ever done any work for. Majority of those town administrators or fire chiefs are not there any longer. So I call, and there was no one I could actually speak with. The call-in center gave three specific references that they...
Recent?
More recent. But the call-in center, so I talked to the town of Harvard, West Barnstable, and Holliston. All three of them are call departments. I will say, West Barnstable has full-time paramedics, they are an ALS ambulance service. So part of what the call-in center did for them was look at the cost of running the ambulance service to see how much the taxpayers were subsidizing their system, because it was a lopsided equation, they were not charging enough. But again, they felt, he felt that they were very easy to work with, the reports were presented in clear PowerPoint presentations. He actually sent me a bunch of them. He said the call-in center fully understood the call model. He felt they were really working for the town, not against them, and not with any predetermined notions. So there really was nothing bad from either company. It was really preference. Like I said, most of them have done many, many reports with whichever company they sort of had started with.
So one of the trends that I note with the call-in center, which I think their proposal was more expensive than, is that right? Municipal Resources? The only thing that stands out to me, though, about the call-in center is that it appears that their recommendations were more reasonable. So if we pay a little bit more to have a, an entity do the review, but they're more sensitive to what the needs of the town are, is that a value added that we need to think about?
Yes, and I will say, with the call-in center, actually, MRI, people said it, too, I think. There was not many surprises. Actually, the MRI may have said they were surprised by some of the recommendations, but they, they were very realistic recommendations. Most of them, on the call-in center, it was all fire chiefs, so I spoke with three fire chiefs. Actually, I'm sorry, one of them was a town administrator. But they all said they are working documents, they were not done to sit on a shelf, they took their recommendations to heart, they felt they were very targeted. And like I said, as time and budget allows, they're all planning to implement as many of these recommendations. The only one who said there was sort of a, not ridiculous, but a large amount of recommendations was Hadley through MRI. And he said, he said that that number, a hundred and sixty-six, he goes, sticks with me all, every time I think of how many we've gone, we've gone through, we still have left to do. But he felt, you know, they were on time with their budget, they were on time and stayed within their budget. They, he found them very professional. No one in, with the exception of Manchester By The Sea, no one knew any of the team... by the Sea, no one knew any of the team members that were assigned to our projects. They had all worked with different members of one or the other group. So Manchester by the Sea spoke very highly of Brian Duggan, who's the one who actually produced the MRI report. Otherwise, they didn't really have anything to say about the team members themselves, but.
You know, I find interesting is, the town of North Andover, Collins Center has more diverse group that they will bring into review with, would lean toward Collins Center. However, Hadley would select MRI over Collins Center for another opportunity presented itself. They almost have.
Do you see that thing that, that Hadley said, is that their, their review was partnered with another town?
Yeah.
And the Collins Center focused more on that other town. So I think that was their.
Mm-hmm. That was their gripe.
Yeah.
Right. So like I said, usually, what I found in talking to all of them is whichever company they've worked with, they do a lot of work with. Even North Andover, so I will disclose, I worked for Andrew many years in Swambsk. He used the Collins Center, I think outside of his North Andover experience. North Andover seems to be an MRI group that they use MRI more regularly. But he personally said he would lean towards the Collins Center if he had to choose between them. And then I asked the same question of Hadley, and that's what he said. He said he didn't feel like it was the Collins Center's fault, but he would lean towards MRI if he had to choose between the two of them. So I guess to take them for what they were, they were all very similar. I did receive a few more samples of reports, if you're interested. I, I was interested in the Collins Center for West Barnstable, because he said they got more presentations. So all of their presentations were bullet style with the, it wasn't a full report like the other ones. So I do have samples of those, if you're interested. There were, you know, many slides with sort of the bullet points that they came in and discussed.
I wouldn't mind seeing them. To tell you the truth, I went straight to the recommendations on both reports. I didn't, I didn't peruse the rest of the document. I went right down to the bottom line and said, what did they recommend to change it or to make it better? What their problem was at the beginning, I didn't really, wasn't really that focused on. Anybody else have anything? Yes, Slickman Wood.
Yeah, I actually went through almost all three hundred pages of it. I didn't read every word, but I did scan through most of it. And my initial assessment was the municipal, the MRI people, to use them as their, as our assessment of their, our town. But, I mean, I, I don't think you can go wrong with either one, but after scanning through and reading through some of the reports and then some of the feedback, I, I came back with MRI would be my choice.
They are cheaper by what, four thousand dollars?
No, no, listen to.
Twenty-two, I think it was fourteen versus sixteen.
I didn't even look at the cost.
Okay.
Slickman Dunn.
I, I didn't read it word for word, like Mike said, but I did go through the MRI, and I went through the Collins, and I would, definitely would go with the MRI myself, like I said last time, and we discussed this. So that's where I would be going with it.
Slickman Watson?
Yeah, I read them both over, and they were, they were both, both impressive. I read over the studies that they had, they had done. They both, I, I don't think you could go wrong with either one. I, I just happen to like the, the Collins Center a little better than the other, based upon some of these that I'm now seeing here on the, on the recommendations and the size of the departments. We, we can't go wrong with either one, but I, if, if I had to choose, I'd, I'd go with the Collins Center.
You, you know, it's funny you said cookie cutter, because there were some reports there that MRI published in their report that exactly what I thought. Volunteerism is down. And tell me something I don't know. How much, how much did I have to pay for that, you know, tidbit of information? The number of fires in the United States is down. Again, better fire suppression, codes are better. Tell me something I don't know. What am I paying for here? You know, I, any joke can find this by Googling it in thirty seconds or less. So what did I pay for there that I didn't already know? So when you said cookie cutter, it really, it struck a nerve with me that I kind of thought the same in some of these charts and, and statistics they were throwing out there that, you know, big deal. That's not news.
I, I will say, so West Barnstable, that chief, Joseph Maruka, he is the, I guess, the president, if you'll call it, of the Call Fire Fighter Association of Massachusetts. I spoke to him for quite some time. What he said about the Collins Center that I, I thought was helpful, was that, you know, where they were losing volunteer call staff, they went in and really looked at the turnover rate, where people were coming from, where people were going, why they were leaving. He said they did like an extensive look to help him develop a strategic plan to retain employees, you know, not unlike what the chief and I spoke about. You know, it's, it's a lot of money to bring someone on, buy turnover gear, train them for them to leave. And the call departments are famous for training people, and then they go on full-time and get a full-time career department. So he was, he said he was very impressed with the work that they did on that specifically. He said that, he's used them quite a bit, and like I said, he's the one who kept sending me reports so that we could see the reports. He did speak very, very highly of them and just said that they did a lot to help the community. One of the comments I put in there was over the last few years, they've gone to a duty call cycle, that instead of just calling or double toning, they assign eight to ten people on a call group. People are on call for two nights out of eight, and then they rotate. That's who's called for medical and low-level calls, but then if it's fire or serious MVAs, everybody's called. He said it's worked really well, and that was one of the things that they took from a study, that that was a better way to deal with sort of the call volume and who was available when.
And that was Collins?
Hmm. That was Collins.
That was Collins.
Because I see something similar that MRI did, but it was much more generic than what you're describing.
Cookie cutter. I see a ra, a hand raised in the back.
Yeah.
You, you, absolutely.
So, um, Kathy Kestner is chairing the finance board, and you know, we, we championed this idea to bring the consultant in, and we fully are going to support this financially in terms of, if you're going to go over what the town meeting allocated, as I understand. So we've been trying, the members have been trying to get to the reports and look through it. I, I myself just picked it up this afternoon. But I'll be very frank with you. When I looked at this Collins report versus the MRI report, I thought for the amount of money that we're going to spend, I thought about what was it that, the finance board, what did we talk about? Why did we want this to happen? Why did we want to come to the Board of Selectmen and say, please, get a consultant? And the reason we wanted it to happen was so that we could have a study done to really evaluate what this department needs to be successful. Now, whether or not we can afford all of it at once, that's another question. But to do a full evaluation means to look at the cookie cutter things, the fact that volunteerism is down, and to look at that. But then this group made it precise to the situation they were studying. They didn't just say, oh, volunteerism is down. They went into it and looked and said, okay, but Palimpton has this many people from in the town and this many people coming from outside the town responding to on-call, and how can we encourage to improve and increase the on-call numbers? And how can we make them feel like they're valued and keep them more on the department? There's very, very specific information in this MRI report. It's very highly technical, which is good, so I don't understand all of it, but I know enough about the technical language of it to understand that they are being very specific and studying each and every attribute of what a fire department needs to be safe, as far as how many firefighters can arrive at a scene, when is it safe for them to go into a fire, and when is it not? How many people need to be there? And what circumstances do they go in when there's not enough people there? All of these things are perhaps things that, as a Board of Selectmen, you haven't really had to deal with. I'm sure Slickman Watson would be the one who has experience with that. But it would be really good for you to see it all and read it all and understand it all. So it's not just about what recommendations this firm will come out with. I think it's also about them giving the community really good information about what we need to do to support the fire department, okay? And what is it going to take if we really want to keep an on-call model? What do we need to do here?
And I think we're all in agreement, and I think.
Yeah, so I just feel like they did an incredibly more in-depth job.
Both companies adequately present, you know, that as well.
This other one did like a bunch of surveys and stuff. These people really went in there. They talked about, like I said, the number of people responding to the call, how many people need to respond to a call to get water on the fire. It's, it's quite specific, and I think it's excellent. For the amount of money we're going to spend, the more specific it can be, I think the better. I mean, ultimately, it's your decision, but I wouldn't predicate it on what recommendations you're looking for, whether or not they'll be sensitive to the community. I mean, we all know there's financial constraints. Everybody knows that. But this would be a one-time opportunity to be able to get a nice wholesome look at this department and the equipment it has, the people it has, and what it's going to need as far as the call volume and all.
And that's exactly why we're here today. Yes.
So I'll elaborate a little bit more. Why I picked the MRI is because I kind of know our department, and I kind of know the struggles we've had over the years. And when I went through the report and I read the report, when I read this and, and went through it, it answered all my questions. And it, it said, yeah, they'll be able to do that. Yeah, they'll be able to do that, knowing what we have, knowing what's in front of us. And that's why I made the, my decision to go here.
Wow. It sounds like we're ready to make a decision, I guess, on this. We've got the person with the pocketbook, and she says we can have money.
So based on everything that I've heard, I'd make a motion that we retain Municipal Resources to complete the evaluation and review.
So are you making a motion to engage MRI to conduct this study for us?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
Yep.
All those against? Ms. Kestner, now to write the check.
Yes. I will call them tomorrow.
Super.
Thank you for gathering that information.
Yes, that was, um.
Yeah, it was a lot to read.
But you know what? I, 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 it was a lot to read, and it was a lot to digest, but I think it was so vitally important that we really knew what we were gonna get for our money, and all felt comfortable that we were spending it in a wor, in a valuable place.
Yes, and you'll see, just in my notes, when I had the opportunity to talk to, like, fire chiefs, that's why I put some specific information about the number of employees and calls, because I'm like, well, if I have them on the phone, I'm gonna ask them other things, too.
Yeah, it's great.
So West Barnstable, as I said, he's the president of the Call Fire Fires, Firefighters Union or whatever, Association of Mass. He said anything we need. If we ever have any questions or ever need any advice on anything, call. He's been the chief there for many years, and would be more than happy to help, help us, so.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move on to votes of the boards. We have minutes from the May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
I'll second that.
And we have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All appro, uh, um.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All in favor? All opposed? Good. We have minutes from the May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from the May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen meeting.
Seconded.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Okay, we have a one-day liquor license for a wedding at V C Park on July eighth, two thousand eighteen, between the hours of three P M. and five P M. I thought I was gonna name the potties between.
Three and seven.
At three and seven P M.
I would make a motion that we approve the one-day liquor license for a wedding at V C Park on July eighth, between three and seven P M.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yep.
Opposed? Moving right along, we have old business. Let's start at your end, Mr. Slickman Wood.
I do not have anything for old business.
Slickman Carpenter.
Um, I'm just wondering, Denise, if we've heard anything about the start date for the new superintendent?
I have not heard anything, actually.
So do we know if they've resolved the contract?
I thought it was in July, but that.
I think that was proposed, but I didn't know.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know officially, but I thought I saw something for July.
I can follow up and ask if they have a start date.
Yeah, that would be great. That's all I have.
Okay, Slickman Dunn.
Um, the, a couple things was on the intersection of Rollin Street and Governors, where they had done some construction work. I've had a couple people ask when they're gonna repair that island out there. And I, I spoke to Denise, and she was gonna ask the road commissioner, I believe, to find out what was going on up there. And then the land sales, we were, we're still moving forward with the land sales?
Yep. I got an email from the DeHulu's over the weekend that they'd like to schedule a closing date for that Salem Uptac property. So we'll get that squared away soon.
Great.
Okay, and then lastly, I'm, I think it's already been taken care of, but the town lawn, lawns look like they burned up. I know there was a problem with the wells, and now hopefully we're going in the right direction there.
Yeah, so I think I may have told you last week. So we swapped out some nozzles. We had a well company, we had a pump company. The well's producing water, the pump seems to be working. It's just a matter of it's not producing enough for the number of, I guess, sprinkler heads and the, and how much area they have to do between the pines and the town hall complex. So we switched it to an every other day, but that wasn't working with the heat. So I do think they have, hopefully, it resolved. But as Mike alluded to earlier, we are having issues with that well. So, excuse me, I will follow up with him anyways on the status of the other well, and if it's something that he's gonna propose that we draw from the river, then perhaps there's a way to connect it to both irrigation systems, and then we can just not spend more money fixing the old well every time the pump sort of clogs up or something like that. So I'll see what he's planning on that, and maybe we won't have this issue anymore.
Okay, and lastly, if, after having them in, if, if we can get a report from the road commissioner on the pines, the bathrooms, the roads?
Yeah, so the bathrooms, I think I checked you last week. So he did up the plumbing specs. We're, I'm waiting on one more quote back on the plumbing. So as soon as I get that third one, then we're good to get that going.
And we'll have money to handle that.
Yep, yep.
Okay. And then it sounds like the speed bumps, maybe when the hot top, he can get them.
Yeah, I mean, I'll talk to him. If it's something that we can quickly and easily buy temporary ones.
I, I, but I don't know. I think those temporary ones can get relatively expensive. We, if they have a company and it's doing some roads, and he brought them over there in five, five, eight tons, and they run across and put some speed bumps?
Yeah, and that's what he said, just because of the width of the pines.
Right.
He said we'll need so many of those temporary ones to go across. He recommended just doing an asphalt.
They can just cost him to buy a lot of them. I mean, you can space them out more, but, um, anyway, okay.
Yeah, I'll follow up with him. Like I said, we talked about it when I got Dan's email the other day, so.
All right, so I guess that's it for me for now.
Slickman Watson?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Okay. I discussed most of my old business during the meeting, so I think I'm good. Selectmen's reports, let's start down at this end. Slickman Watson, anything to report on the senior center, on?
Uh, moving slowly.
Moving slowly. Have you, do we have, uh, individuals that you've picked out or that you're working with?
Um, we're, we're moving slowly and, and nothing to report at this time.
All righty. Slickman Dunn, anything to report on your business development, any progress?
Yes, I had spoke to Denise, which she had the, Deb Webster had compiled between Denise and Deb Webster, a list of the business people. I went through and crossed out the ones that didn't make sense to send a letter. So that's been handed over to Denise, and she's gonna forward it on to the Slickman secretary, I believe, to compile a letter, which is a letter here that has been put together. And she's also gonna put on the website to try and get people to see if they'd be interested in this, you know, talking and sitting down, see what we can do to help them, rather than sit here at town hall hoping people show up, and they don't. So through the website, we'll hopefully get a better idea.
Yeah, so my recommendation to Bill was, instead of sending out a meeting notice, we would send out a link to a survey that people could sort of answer some basic questions about, you know, that Bill sort of articulated about businesses in town, what we can do to help them. And then based on if we get responses or what type of responses, then he can organize a meeting to sit down with the group and really talk about it. But I don't know that we're gonna get people coming into a meeting yet, so I think if, if we start by sending out a letter and trying to solicit some feedback, then he can figure out what he wants to do with that information.
Okay. Slickman Carpenter, anything to report on your? Uh, Selectman Carpenter, anything to report on your, um...
Um, we haven't had any meetings recently, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Uh, Selectman Wood, you don't...
I don't do anything.
Have anything going on?
Just a bump on the log up here, I don't do anything.
Okay, I'll report on the last high school building committee meeting we had. We basically spent the entire meeting scrubbing and reviewing every single proposal we had again, almost ad nauseam, just to make sure that we scrub every stinking penny that's going to propose to go into that building so that we can strive to get the greatest value for our dollar going down the road. We basically came, after long discussion, correct me if I'm wrong, Denise, but we came to the same conclusions that we had come to six months ago, that the joint middle school and high school is the best solution for these three communities and the best value for our dollar going forward. There is a huge presentation in the high school cafeteria on...
July...
I know, let me test it on this.
Twenty-fourth, maybe?
July 24th. And that's at 6:30, I believe?
Six thirty.
Um, if you don't know anything about the new high school building project or proposal, I suggest you get out to it. It'd be very worthwhile for you to educate yourselves, get up to speed on the project, what this committee has done in the last 12 months to prepare for it. It's very worthwhile. Get involved. I think you'd be very, very interested in seeing some of the work that's done. Yes?
When you're done, that's our question.
I think I'm done with my report. Unless Denise wants to add anything that I might have missed.
Um, I don't think so. I think, so part of why we had to go over things again, we may have reported back at the last meeting, that the state really wanted us to go back and look at every original proposal. They wanted to see more high school-only options, meaning just a new high school, just a renovation to a high school.
Repair.
Repair to the high school. So the architects really had to build out every scenario possible, really.
Full-scale models.
They will, at the public hearing, have estimated costs to the taxpayer. One of the important things that they will point out is if, if the school committee votes to move forward with just a high school-only option, the middle school is still in need of repair or major renovations, if not now, in the near future.
Very near future.
So the architects were looking at, on the high school-only options, deferred cost of what it would cost to fix or do something with the middle school down the line. And really, at the end of it, when you add a high school and a middle school separately, even if it's 10 years apart where they're 30-year bonds, the difference really came down to, I don't even think it was $200, between building new now or replacing both buildings over a span of 10 or 15 years. So it really is quite interesting. They've done a lot of work. They will have a lot of good...
Information.
Information. We fine-tuned the PowerPoint presentation that will be going out, will be showed at those meetings, because I think it is important to see both sides of it and see, you know, high school-only option is great, but again, you still have to deal with the middle school at some point. So that's a fact, and that's something that will have to be taken into consideration.
I, I think, to correct you, I think the high school-only and middle school option later was actually more expensive than the high school-middle school combination now. I think it came out to about $400 more.
Oh, maybe.
Yeah, I was kind of keen on those numbers.
Yeah, might have been.
And I guess this should be one thing. Another thing, I know Mr. Demore had mentioned about a elevated track. There are some things that the state will not reimburse us for, for example, a parking lot, which is absolutely necessary. You have to have a parking lot. There are certain things like the size of the auditorium. They will only pay for an auditorium that seats, how many? I think it was 300 people, which is far smaller than what we have now. So those costs, unfortunately, they're not completely covered and reimbursable by the state, but they're absolute necessities.
Right, unless, unless you combine the high school-middle school and then they allow for more room.
And then you get a little bit more, they allow for more.
So that's really the benefit to combining them in one building is a larger auditorium is covered, a larger gymnasium is covered, the cafeteria. So those types of things are covered larger. They did talk about using, I think this was that meeting, talking about using sort of the auditorium for more community events.
Yes.
Because it would be large enough that you could host more community events if someone wanted to have something done there.
And I think that was brought about by the community's expression that they wanted a larger venue in the high school so that it could support larger venues, for example, graduations in case it rains. Right now, you're limited to two tickets, and for most of us, that's not nearly enough. So the meeting went well, and I'm looking forward, hopefully you can all make that July presentation. It'll be well worth your while. So now we'll go on to correspondence minutes. We have the minutes from July 11, 2000. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, just a comment.
Yes.
Since I was chair last year, I didn't assign myself to a committee or project, so...
You want to give a second?
I will be open to talking about options that come up where you need help or some kind of focus.
I love your enthusiasm.
I don't know if that was enthusiastic, but I said I would be open to talking about...
It's enthusiasm, and I expect...
You're kind of yawning as you say it.
Yeah. I was half asleep, but if there's something that comes up where you need help or appoint persons, then I'd be open to doing something like that.
We'll talk.
Okay.
Lots.
Fantastic.
All right. Correspondence, we have minutes from the June 11, 2018 Bagnell School Lease Agreement and PRSD Regional Agreement. I would ask that each one of you become very familiar with that document. It's going to come up in the very near future. Uh, there's a letter from Ruth Mattingly regarding penalty for late tax payments and a fiscal year 2017 audit reports.
May I speak on the letter from Ruth Mattingly quickly?
I suppose so.
So just so you're all aware, she sent a letter, which you have a copy of, claiming that she will send additional letters.
Mm-hmm.
She sent her, she still has property and, I think it's just property, actually, yeah, I think she has property still. She sent those payments in late, so by the time it came here, they were additional, there was additional interest. As I've told you guys in the past, everyone's treated the same, so if there's past due balances, demand bills go out. So she did receive demand bills for those late charges. She's not happy about it. Now, in hindsight, had she called and said, I got these, I would say they were minimal amounts, and I probably would have just said, you know what, I will adjust it. But she sent in the payment and sent in a letter complaining about it. So every taxpayer has to pay their bills, and they pay them on time, otherwise they get demand bills. So just so you are aware, she sends additional correspondence, which she claims she will. It's all legal under Mass General Law, so just wanted to make you aware of that.
Just a question on that. When she, she sent the bill in late and so it was even post-mock late?
Correct. Correct. And it wasn't like a day late, it was, I think, a few weeks late.
All right, now we have finance director's time.
Yeah, just two quick things. This Thursday, from 1:00 P.M. to 6:00 P.M., we are sponsoring a Red Cross blood drive. There are still appointments available. They look to book about 40 appointments, and when I checked this afternoon, we had about 28 booked, so there's still time and room available if people would like to give blood. There is a dire need for blood donations right now.
What are the hours for that?
1:00 to 6:00 P.M. To make an appointment, you could go to redcrossblood.org and put Groveland in under the appointment section.
So they don't take walk-ins?
They do take walk-ins, so you, if someone is available, you could walk in, but they try and make as many appointments as they can.
Okay.
Uh, the second item, just quickly, was checking on our special legislation to make the Road Commissioner position appointed. It is formally filed as House Bill Number 4620, sponsored by both Senator Tarr and Representative Mira. They looked at it as recently as the end of last week, and it was referred to the Committee on Municipalities and Regional Government. So it is moving. I do think they are recessing this week, so it probably won't go any further until the fall, but there is an actual bill number filed, and we can now track that. So that's all I have for you all tonight.
And, I'm sorry.
Did you have something now?
I had a question, but I wanted to wait to be, I know you're going in order, so...
Okay, we'll go Selectmen's time. Selectman Wood?
Uh, yeah, I actually have one thing. During Candidates' Night, we had a question about line painting on Main Street and having that redone. There were some complaints about during bad weather and not being able to see the lines adequately, especially during the wintertime. So I did reach out to Senator Tarr's office and Representative Mira, who then reached out to Department of Transportation's Section 4, District 4?
District 4, yeah.
District 4, and then they did put us on the list to have that done this summer. They would not give me an actual time for when that would be done, other than it was on the list and hopefully be done this summer, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Wanted to make you aware of that. That's it.
Tremendous. Selectman Carpenter?
So at some point, we'll talk more about the fiscal year 2017 audit reports.
Yes, so they are coming in on July...
Oh, I thought that was what we...
23rd.
That was what...
Yes, so you have the reports. They will come in and talk about them with you guys.
Oh, oh, they will come in.
Yes.
Yes.
So they couldn't make the next meeting, so July 23, I have them on the agenda to come in and talk about. The good thing about that schedule, actually, is they are doing their preliminary fiscal 18 audit for us the first full week in July, so he will be able to actually report back because the report you have in front of you is the last report of our former town accountant. So he will be able to report back on any changes or progress he's seen over the last year when he came out to the preliminary.
Okay.
Okay. Selectman Dunn?
To help me try and remember how this went, the Center Street property, we had that discussion in the past about those front lots.
Yep.
I know Selectman McDonald was going to go to the state legislation or something. Did we just never carry on with that, or how'd that end up?
No, so I think Mike Dempsey and Dan McDonald submitted their proposal to, I believe, both Senator Tarr and Representative Mira, but it wasn't, it wasn't any form of special legislation. I think they just submitted a proposal looking for any assistance from the state.
And did we ever hear anything back?
Senator Tarr is still working on it, it's still active.
Okay, thank you.
Selectman Watson?
Perhaps we could get an update on when Route 97 heading towards Georgetown, I guess, technically, Route 97, it's north and south, so it'll be southbound. Prior to, just before the electric company where they had that water leak, I'll go over that patch a couple of times today. That needs to be repaired before the year is up. And then just beyond that, there's a water gate, same thing. There's a, it looks like there was a repair done at the water gate, and I know that that road was guaranteed for a year, but we want to make sure that we get that done in a timely fashion so that if there is problems with it, that it can be taken care of again. We should be coming up sometime in the fall with that, with that year being up.
Yeah, I would say the water leak probably doesn't fall under the contractor because I think it was probably our water department that had to dig that up and fix it. So I'll follow up with the water department on that. As far as the water gate, that probably does fall under the original project.
Well, the, the one that was northbound between Center Street and a little bit of Avenue, Doris Street, that was, that was a water leak also. And that was, that patch was taken care of by the contractor in the spring.
It was, it was in our department?
I thought it was, I thought it was the contractor.
I think it was us.
Well, then let's find out from the water department when they're going to correct that patch out there.
They said they were going to infrared them.
What's that?
They said they were going to infrared them.
That's what they said, but...
And I think I...
That certainly hasn't been taken care of yet.
I'm not sure, but I think Ed's right. I think that that one northbound had something to do with the contractor had to go back in there and do work on that again.
Okay.
And they were supposed to take care of that. I know originally it broke on behalf of our water department, and then they had to go in and do something to the water hydrant or something, so they were back in there on that. I think, I think he is right.
I thought they were supposed to take care of both.
I know I've asked about one, I asked the water department about one of them that you brought up before, I just don't know which one that is. I think it was the first one.
Yes, yes.
That's probably been resolved, so...
That one's, that one seems to have been resolved.
And so, Ed, it's on the south side before the light department?
If you, yes.
It's in front of us, and I mean, in front of...
If you're going southbound on 97, it's after the, after the industrial park and before the electric company.
Okay. Okay, I'll follow up with that.
And then probably 40 feet beyond that is the water gate. It looks like it, it looks like it may have been dug up, and that's, that's not a smooth ride over that either.
Okay.
Anything else?
I'm all set with that.
Okay, I just have two really quick things. One is I'd like to personally thank Mr. Charlie Mendez from Groveland TV for going down to Washington Park and taping the Boys All-Star Game. I know they enjoyed it, bet they can't wait to see themselves on TV. So when that's available, I'm sure he'll let me know, we can get that out to the public. The other thing is, I just wanted to follow up really quick on the library. I know that they had switched their modus of investment, and I was just wondering how that was coming along and working out for them. Do you have any I...
Um, are you looking for figures?
Yeah, I know at one time we were making a whopping 82 cents a month in interest. I'm hoping that we've really done a better job with that. Is there any figures lately on how we're doing?
Um, yes, give me one second, only because I track it monthly, so I can tell you... Oops. So fiscal 18 through May... Uh, $661.30 has been made this fiscal year in interest costs.
An interest income?
Correct. Interest income and fiscal 17...
Through five months?
No, 11.
11.
That's 11 months. Last fiscal year was $12.39.
That's a big increase.
So, so it is doing quite well. I will say, you know, most of our trust funds now are invested in both risky and moderate, so it does fluctuate with the market.